Good evening, everyone. This is Chris. It's almost seven o'clock here, but I think we are expecting a full board in attendance this evening. So we'll give a couple more minutes for the last couple to, oh, actually, I think we have a full house now. As far as I can see, I believe we have the entire Board of Trustees with us here tonight. Miranda, are we ready to go on your end?
Yes, we are.
All right, very good. Then at seven o'clock here on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, we will call to order this meeting of the Town of Netherland Board of Trustees. Miranda, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Yeah.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Here.
Mayor Proton Baumhover. Trustee Danforth. Trustee Danforth. I don't see that her mic is hooked up. I'll come back. Trustee Corvillan.
Here.
And I don't. Trustee Danforth, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
All right, very good. Then we have a full house this evening. And welcome to a large group of members of the public who have joined us. Thank you for coming out on nice early fall evening and joining us online. We have two items on the consent agenda night, the warrants and the minutes meeting, meeting minutes from our previous September meeting. Does anyone from the board have any comments or questions regarding these items?
I make a motion to approve.
I second. This is Julian.
We have a motion and a second on the table for the consent agenda. Miranda, please.
Mayor Proton Baumhover.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
All right. Moving into public comment on non-agenda items, I want to thank Susan Wagner for her comments earlier this week. I think we've got a lot of comments on agenda items this week for the things we're taking care of tonight, but this is our chance for anyone from the public who would like to speak on non-agenda items. So if anyone would like to speak for three minutes on something we're not discussing tonight, now would be your chance. Please either raise your hand to be recognized or begin speaking. Seeing and hearing nothing, we will continue to move forward into what it promises to be an exciting meeting tonight, a nice long agenda. And we are going to dive right into our action items, which is beginning with a planned unit development and density increase for Little Bear Village, item five point one, which I believe is going to be introduced by our town planning. Commissioner, or not commissioner, Cynthia, are you introducing this? Administrator, that was the word I was looking for.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, and Residents this evening. The application before you is a consideration of a final planned unit development. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Hear me? Okay, okay. A planned unit development. At five seventy-five North Peak-to-Peak Highway, the applicants Ellen Mode Bull Young and Dennis Bull Young intend to create four units at this location. The property is eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one square feet. The location of the property in the neighborhood commercial district allows it the density increase, as noted within the packet analysis. It's the only zone that allows the density increase. The density increase allows the density to be dialed from four thousand square foot per dwelling unit to two thousand square foot per dwelling unit at that location with eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one square feet. They would be able to put five units. They've proposed to put four units. Those would be four, excuse me, four units within two duplexes, three bedrooms within each unit, two and a half baths, one car garage, and additional parking on site. They've gone through the preliminary planned unit development, which goes to the Planning Commission, and then they are coming to the board for the final planned unit development. They came from the Planning Commission on August twenty-sixth, where they had the final planned unit development that was continued from an earlier meeting, July twenty-second. There were a few items to address, including drainage and some aspects shown on the site plan, gaping, parking setbacks, and other things. The application was noticed at a plan for the public hearing. There was not too much staff commentary on the property and the proposal. Fire Marshal Rick Hendrickson's seeing to fires in Oregon right now, so I don't think he will be logging on tonight for this meeting. But I think there was a fire hydrant that needed to be replaced at that location when they tested it. They discovered they needed to replace it. So I think that's intended to be done. The buildings on the property that are being proposed are just over seventeen hundred square feet each. The neighbors did present concerns throughout the preliminary planned unit development and the final planned unit development at the Planning Commission. The main concern was about the building height and blocking the viewscape existing residents there in the neighborhood. There were also concerns from the adjoining neighbor about drainage. There were some general concerns about the added density to that neighborhood, especially given tungsten village, which has yet to open, but has twenty-six units that they would be bringing in residents, and those impacts are as yet unknown and unseen. And these neighbors have just been through about a year of construction of that building. So I believe some of them are present tonight to speak to their concerns. The application does fit in within the scope of planned unit development and did go through the Planning Commission. The motion did pass. There were two in opposition and six in favor of moving forward to the Board of Trustees. There are thirteen total parking spaces on site for the units, and that is in keeping with section sixteen dash two oh two parking requirements. They intend to have all the parking on site. They are looking for an anticipated development timeframe if it's approved by the Board of Groundbreaking in the fall of two thousand and twenty here and project completion by next spring into summer. I think that pretty much covers everything. I want to note the density increase is section sixteen dash eighty-eight. There are five conditions that are associated with the density increase in order to allow that, and they are: the project needs to be processed as a planned unit development, have at least eight thousand square feet in size, at least twenty-five percent of the property needs to be landscaped, open space, not to include parking. Project may require site planning, landscaping, and building design by certified professionals, given that it's a it constitutes commercial development that is a requirement in the building phase, and the applicant pays the additional costs incurred by the town for extraordinary review of the application, including services of outside contractors, that would be legal services and any planning escrow that gets deducted in any engineering escrow. I can answer any questions of the board.
Thank you, Cynthia.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go through. This is an opportunity now for the Board of Trustees to ask town staff any questions. This is, we'll have our chance to kind of give our opinions and such later, but first I just want to give us a chance to ask town staff any questions with regards to the PUD that's on the table tonight. So I'm going to just go down the list and beginning with Trustee Apt. Do you have any question for Cynthia or town staff?
Excuse me, not really. It seems that the proposed development is within guidelines for both density and height below the limit, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Coombs Ismail?
I did have a couple of questions. One is, the first is functional. I'm wondering what constitutes open space in our code definition? What?
That is a good question. So landscape open space. The landscape part is obvious, but not building. So I would, I would constitute that as a pervious surface. So impervious surface, that would be concrete, asphalt, or buildings. I think it leaves room for trails. It leaves room for gardens. It leaves room for open space that's not covered.
Okay, thank you for that. It does. And the other question that I had was regarding the issue of height, and that is, you know, in regarding the adjacent, you know, residential housing that's around there and not adversely impacting that housing and complying with all the, all the various places within, you know, town code, but also within our comprehensive plans that, and our design documents that these, that anything new that we built should, you know, fit in with what exists already, generally speaking. I think that part of that would be to not adversely affect, you know, people's experience of the town by building new structures that would potentially block views. And I guess my question is, I didn't really see much clarity in all the comments submitted to the board, but also in this aim of whether or not the height that is being proposed indeed block the view that neighborhood residents are seeking to maintain.
It's a good question, and there's a bit of subjectivity in these reviews, often with the phrase "in keeping with the character of the area", and that is subjective. And most of the requirements within the code are, are not so. They're pretty specific. Logistically so. And this is one element that, that does have a subjectivity quality to it. The use proposed itself is in keeping with the area around it, given multifamily housing that's in the area and the commercial brewery and things like that. As regards height, maximum building height in the district is thirty-five feet. As for whether or not a new proposal is in keeping with the character of the area, the character of the area is generally shorter. It is in the neighborhood commercial district, which is part of the historic aspect of town, but it is in the central business district that's called out in the Netherland Design Standards. The design standards are required in the central business district, but they're not required in other parts of town. They're more, they serve as guidelines. So there is, you know, the general character of that area is definitely under twenty feet, one-story, one-and-a-half-story buildings, with the exception of tungsten village that's at their max height there. Otherwise, in general, on the outside of the heights, generally shorter structures. I think the brewery probably constitutes the tallest thing that's in the surrounding area. And I think the Marchios are probably on tonight and have submitted some comment. I think I remember Chris Marchio saying his building's about twenty feet high.
I had one question then. Yes, that does answer it. Thank you. And my, my last question regarding that is, you know, in the, in the research that I've been able to do myself, it has seemed to me that twenty-eight feet is on the high end for a two-story house, nationally speaking. And in, with that in mind, do, do we understand that there would be any significant disadvantage that these folks would have who are doing the building here in making, in essentially complying with their neighbor's request that the building not exceed twenty-four feet?
That's a challenging question, trustee. I, I I certainly see buildings can be done shorter. And I think it, it, it sort of falls on the applicant if they want to voluntarily lower the, the height of the building. As I said, the maximum building height across the town is thirty-five feet. The applicants have voluntarily lowered that to twenty-eight point four feet. You know, I, I, I think I don't live in that neighborhood, and I, and I think for those who do live in that neighborhood, that is a consideration for them. And I can understand their concerns as, as many people move up here for the views and, and to, to have the view that we do. And so it, you know, it, it sort of puts me into a subjective place as a neutral town staff member to say, is that too tall? I, I, I would say that I hear the concerns of the neighbors that it is taller than most things in that area, and that is a concern for them, and it will affect their viewscape. And I think that's a, that's a pretty local concern in that neighborhood. And, you know, given that, that they've, they've had a lot of density in that area specifically, I, I think, you know, that can be a challenge. And you've seen their comments, and we'll hear their comments tonight about that, and I think that they're better to speak to that and, and what that would look like for them. I don't know if that helps, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric. Next, John Baumhover.
I believe I'm still needed. No particular questions at the, my understanding is this has gone through and as the PUD, they've managed to comply with town code. And at this point, we could request further reduction in height, but at this point, from, we, we have the ability as the BOT to, may have reasonable regulation still over this, but at this point, it's managed to meet town code at every point. And I've seen reviewing the, the standards, are you, do you have any concerns as town staff with anything that's come your way in reviewing this?
I mean, other than the concerns of the neighbors, I wouldn't say that anything stands out. I think if there's questions of the not feel sufficient for the neighborhood or board members, that should be a consideration of working with the Planning Commission to add elements that they want. There's a lot of considerations that applicants need to go through in order to meet these applications, the goals of the comprehensive plan, consider their neighbors. You know, it, it, it may be different if you live in the neighborhood versus having investment in the neighborhood for those, you know, for, for, for people to make a development proposal, but I think there's no shortage of requirements and hoops to jump through respectively with the code as it exists in the comprehensive plan. And so the concerns of the neighbors that I hear, it wouldn't say that there were any overt concerns that the application doesn't meet the code, if I said that correctly.
Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
No further questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. Trustee Taylor?
I have a number of comments for later, but for right now, I have one question, and it is the fence that goes around this property. Number one, the fence seems very out of place in this particular neighborhood where there aren't a lot of fences. But my concern is that the fence appears to be within one hundred feet of the center of the intersection of Fourth Street and the highway. How tall is this fence?
I don't think the applicants have given a specific height. The building code allows, and this is the two thousand and twelve building code, which is actually, I believe, it conflicts with section sixteen dash eighty-nine fences that the, the zone code hasn't been updated. It's a six feet. The building code allows for seven feet, and that's a maximum height. It's not that someone has to go to that height. The concern that was mentioned about the need for a fence was more in keeping the future residents, animals, and children in, and and safety and things like that, and also dogs coming from the outside, keeping them out.
Yeah, the fence is not described as a closed fence. It's an open fence.
Okay.
Beyond that, my concern is that someone on Fourth Street coming out of the bar and going onto the highway is going to turn to the left, and they're going to see a fence. That's my concern. Because this is a sharp turn going onto that intersection, and I'm concerned that drivers, either the one at the intersection or the one behind that driver, is not going to be able to see who's coming up on the left.
That's an absolutely respectful concern, trustee Taylor. Within the fence code, it's, you know, there's a lot of looseness within the code, but I think the big consideration is vision clearance. And that's something that I speak to, given that there's no requirement for a permit for a fence. So I usually speak about building it on your property, ensuring that you're not building it. A lot of people want to build on their property lines, and I try to remind people that snow storage may sit there for quite a lot of the winter and, and bear down on their night fence and, and cause damage. But also vision clearance is one of the main concerns that I speak to on staff about turn, you know, being able to see around turns and what sort of impacts fencing creates in blocking view. So whenever I speak with people about fences, that's always a consideration, but thanks for pointing that out.
So you're saying sixteen eighty-nine, part E in the code, is no longer valid?
Sixteen eighty-nine A is the six feet in height. The E is absolutely valid.
And this is within one hundred feet of that center, if I'm not, if I'm reading the document correctly.
I would, I'm going to let the applicants speak to their proposed fence. I don't know if they were aware of sixteen eighty-nine fences as they were planning their, their site plan. At this point, their box is on paper. I'm sure they could change that with respect to being in keeping with the code.
Okay. I just think it's very important that we make sure we have clear views for anyone pulling up to that intersection.
Sure.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Julian.
Thank you.
Trustee Danforth, any questions for town staff?
I just want to say that I, I think Julian's concern is valid. I, I looked at the site plan and can't quite see where the fences are, but yeah, that, that part of Peak-to-Peak Highway is very dangerous. We've just, over the summer, have had head-on collisions there, a car that slipped over into the neighbor's yard. It was upside down. So anything we can do to try to keep maximum visibility for anybody trying to turn onto Peak-to-Peak, I think we need to push for that, just because all summer long, it's, it's been a place where there's constantly skidding tires and, you know, obviously the crashes that, that I've seen in just the last couple of months. So definitely want to keep that on our radar. Question I have for town staff, though, is when you're determining whether something fits in the neighborhood, generally, how far away are we looking to determine what's the immediate neighborhood?
Wow, you guys are great with the questions tonight. Thank you. I don't know that I have a specific distance. It's not like the three-hundred-foot buffer for neighbors or things like that. I think I, I consider the general area, the immediate area, the larger vicinity. I'm, I'm usually considering sort of the immediate proximity around, around that area and what would be seen and what sort of impacts, depending on, on, on what we're, we're speaking of. And I would say with respect to the highway, your comment about the highway, we had pushed for Boulder County Housing Authority to work on lowering the speed in town. There's that nice speed trap as you come in on thirty-five miles an hour. I do thirty-one on my bike coming down that hill, so I know it's hard for cars to slow down. That's true. And it absolutely is a, is a sharp curve and a, and a, and a hard spot. CDOT has been unwilling to lower the speed limit, although I think that consideration is coming after tungsten village fills in, and we have residents there, and then they would reconsider that area as we fill in the density a bit to see if it, if it should be changed. I, I think it should, but
Yeah.
I think they have to do studies among many, many departments if they're out, if that's a valid concern for them.
All right, thank you. And I think that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Last, but certainly not least, Tanya, Trustee Corvillan, you have any questions for town staff?
Seventeen hundred square foot per building?
Cynthia? Yes, ma'am. Seventeen twenty-two, I believe.
Yeah, and then each, within each building, there's two units, or that's just one unit?
Correct. With each building is two units, each unit having three bedrooms.
They're putting three bedrooms in, like, eight hundred and sixty square feet? Or am I confused here?
So, Tanya, we're going to go straight after we have questions for town staff here. We're going to have a presentation from the, from the developers.
But I want to talk to Cynthia about this.
That's fine. I just wanted to let you know that that might be answered here in a moment if Cynthia doesn't.
I can ask my question. So Cynthia, they're putting three bedrooms in eight hundred and sixty square feet?
I, I believe they said that the, the units were over, over that in terms of the
Seventeen, I mean, maybe my math is wrong. The whole building is seventeen hundred square feet.
That's a footprint.
Oh, the footprint. It goes each, gotcha. Do they submit plans of the design on the interior?
They, they, they submitted somewhat kind of basic floor plans, but they didn't create floor plans as in what they would have for a building submittal at the proposal stage.
Gotcha. So seventeen hundred square feet is the amount of space at the bottom if you drew a rectangle?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the
Units.
All right, and so then I had another question. And maybe I misread it. They had to change the zoning to do this, or it was, the zoning's okay for that?
The zoning is the neighborhood commercial district. And section sixteen dash eighty-eight, the density increase. The neighborhood commercial zone is the only district that allows the density to be increased. So essentially, the basic requirement for the neighborhood commercial district for any property in the neighborhood commercial district is four thousand square foot dwelling unit. So that's the standard size if you're going to propose a development. With respect to the density increase, it allows only in that zone for you to, to increase the density, so dialing it to two thousand square foot per dwelling unit rather than four. So at the eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one square feet for the property, that, that could allow up to five units. They're proposing four units.
Gotcha. And then just, when you were saying it, it met all the criteria for not conflicting with the surrounding neighborhood and preserving the natural scenic features of the area. Is that something that has to meet in order to be approved?
There is a, there is a requirement within the planned unit development code. And so there, there is a bit of subjectivity in that requirement in that it does, it does speak about the area and whether or not it's in keeping with that area. So that, that is, that is one of the subjective qualities of, of the code, where most things within the code are pretty specific. You meet it or you don't. And, and that's a, you know, Netherland is, leaves room for a lot of very variety.
Yeah, well, it is very subjective, because
But it notes, it, it, it notes, so, so under sixteen dash one fifty-eight approval criteria and conditions, a planned unit development application shall be approved only by the board if the, if the trustees find that. Number one, the application is generally compatible with adjacent land uses. Number two, the application is consistent with a comprehensive plan. Number three, the town has the capacity to serve with water, sewer, fire, and police. The number of dwelling units permitted by the underlying zoning district is not exceeded by the planned unit development is number four. Number five is the planned unit development utilizes the natural Number five is the planned unit development utilizes the natural character of the land, includes compatible land uses, provides for fire and police protection, off-street parking, vehicular, pedestrian, bicycle circulation, outdoor recreation. Its overall compatible architectural design achieves adequate screening, buffering, aesthetic landscape, avoids development of areas of potential hazard, compliance with performance standards and meets all other provisions of the chapter. So that's, that's a pretty chunky number five that includes some of the other things, but it does have, you know, 16158 does have some element of subjectivity in there.
Wasn't there, preserve the natural scenic features of the area or something, wasn't that?
Utilizes the natural character of the land and, you know, avoids hazard with the aspects. Subsection B notes, in considering an application for planned unit development, the Board of Trustees may impose conditions on the final application to ensure compliance with this article. So there is some subjectivity for the board to consider.
Okay.
Irrelevant aspects.
Gotcha, I'm going to concur with the fencing issue with the causing potentially a left turn problem for people coming out of that neighborhood. And I'm sure they can just eliminate that, but I also worry about the height of not being able to see the road. Have you guys thought, have you guys walked on the site and imagined it there? Would cars be able to see what's coming? Because right now it's just a short building with a, you know, a field or what I call a play yard.
Sure.
Do you think that it's, the setback is enough that it's not going to affect their left turn, the being so high?
With respect to the fence?
No, the actual building.
I, that's a good question. I've been on the site extensively posting it and in that area. I've stood on Third Street and tried to consider the future application just as, just as I do. I believe the map is not the territory, so looking at things on paper doesn't compare to actually being on the ground and looking at things, especially because I don't live in the neighborhood. So, uh, whether or not the fence or aspects of that development would inhibit viewscape, I think that's a, that's a question for the applicants in terms of, of, of how they can consider those elements, turn radius of that road, and if there's any aspects that the board would like to see altered because of that. It's, you know, it's, it's sort of hard for me to imagine that and, and, and understand it, you know, how functional.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing it's going to be setback enough that people are going to be able to see what's coming. I don't know, but I do concur that the fence seems a bit of a liability for that.
I think there is to make fencing and the applicants can speak to the type of fencing they want, but I think there's ways to make fencing that you can see through it, that it serves the purpose of the intended fence without inhibiting viewscape in ways. There's also aspects of the fence chapter that, that you may have to step your fence down in order to meet those aspects of the code. So it may be six feet in some places and have to step down so that it, it meets the code.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, um, wait, I want to question then, if the building is the footprint is 1700 square foot, how big is the actual whole thing going to be?
What is it? 3444 square feet? Something, something like that as a total footprint.
I mean, you guys have. Because you said it's not really 1700 square foot of building, it's, that's just the footprint if you.
Yeah, that's the footprint, so two of those buildings. You know, it's a, what is that, like a one-fourth of, you know, a little under one-fourth of the site in building, in, in pervia, in impervious surface defined as buildings, you know, any structures, concrete or asphalt that would affect the sheet flow onto the property of precipitation.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious, like if you were to list it as a property like for sale, how big is each building?
Well, you'd go by the footprint, so, so, I mean, and they wouldn't be able to separate those buildings. I mean, you know.
Well, they'll let me know how big each unit is, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tanya, thank you, everyone. I think it sounds like it might have maybe addressed by the applicants. And I know they are here with us this evening and I see them online and I believe they have a presentation prepared for us. I think the next best thing will be to have the, the applicants themselves speak to us and give us an idea of their vision for this, this property. So I don't know if it's Dennis, Ellen or both which are here, but welcome to Netherland.
Thank you for allowing us to present today.
Yeah, thanks, we're both here.
Very good.
And we are residents of Netherland. And as you mentioned, I'm Ellen and this is my husband Dennis. So what I'm going to do is address all the requirements that we've had to meet. There are 18 power requirements for the final PUD that we're presenting tonight. So we'll have a few slides and we will go through and point out each of the requirements that we're meeting on each slide. Thank you, Miranda, next slide. This next slide is a narrative that we had to put together and on this page we will be addressing section 16-155, number 1L. Areas of known hazards such as 100-year flood plain, rock slides, subsidence or other similar hazards and mineral areas of potentially economically feasible extraction value. The next requirement is 16-155-2A, an explanation of the character of the planned unit development and the manner which it has been planned to take advantage of the planned unit development regulations. 2B, a statement of the present ownership and legal description of all the land included within the planned unit development. And section 16155-2C, a brief statement describing the environmental impact of the planned unit development with specific reference to the performance standards identified in this chapter. In the interest of time, I know you said you have many things to consider. I am going to skip the first, first paragraph on this page and go straight into the second one. Our proposed redevelopment, the first paragraph was just our background and I'm sure you've had time to read the packet. Our proposed redevelopment project, we are calling Little Bear Village and it is a planned multifamily residential project consisting of two new duplex townhomes for a total of four residential housing units. The projects take, the project takes advantage of the plan regulations by utilizing the increased square footage option for multifamily units in the neighborhood commercial zone. Each unit will consist of three bedrooms, two and a half baths, which will help to address the ongoing housing needs outlined in the Netherland Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, we reviewed the Bowen Report, which deals with the lack of housing in Netherland, even specifically safe housing as much of the housing stock is 50 to 60 years old and has not been brought up to current codes. In a recent conversation with some community housing advocates, advocates, the decline in school rates was discussed, which we know is also a concern for the Board of Trustees. By providing additional housing opportunities, Little Bear Village will be able to address some of these noted areas of concern while also helping to add to the growth and success of this community. The character of the planned unit development will highlight the previous history of the Little Bear School, utilizing salvage logs where possible and materials from the existing preschool, which is to be deconstructed. It will reflect the rustic nature and natural colors of the alpine landscapes surrounding Netherland and is of overall compatible architectural design with the neighborhood. Our goal is for Little Bear Village to be compatible with and complement the neighborhood buildings in the immediate vicinity, new and existing single-family two-story, new and existing multifamily two-story and existing height of the commercial government buildings in the vicinity. The open space will be landscaped with aspen trees, rock mulch, low water vegetation and pervious plush limestone to facilitate proper drainage and water runoff. Additionally, a professional drainage plan is under development by Rocky Ridge Civil Engineering. There are no known areas of potential hazard. The flood plain to the north does not affect the property. The project complies with all PUD requirements and meets all town codes. The environmental impact of the project is projected to be minimal based on the following. Per code, the maximum lot coverage is 40%, which would be 4,704 square feet. Our project is 29.2%, which is 3,444 square feet. Per code, the maximum height allowed is 35 feet, our project is 28.4%. Per code, the maximum density for an 11,761 square foot lot in the NC zone is five units, our project is four units. All parking is off-street and self-contained in Little Bear Village. The landscape plan will provide screening and buffering. The perimeter fence surrounding the property will provide safety in that it will keep any potential children or pets inside. All tenants will be required per their lease to store belongings inside their units. Some of the questions had to do, that just recently came up, had to do with the fence. So we'll address right-of-way setbacks from CDOT and the other various setbacks on the next slide. Okay, on this side we'll be addressing, on this slide we'll be addressing five requirements. They are section 16155, 1A, the boundary, overall size and legal description of the site. 1G, the internal vehicular circulation system, which is the driveway and the turning movement and access control for parking. 16155-1I, off-street parking areas, loading areas, including refuse disposal. 16155-1J, areas which are to be dedicated for public use and open space. And then 16155-1M, the landscape plan illustrating the size, type and location of plant materials. Okay, at the top we have, may need to zoom in a little bit more, Miranda, I'm not sure if anyone can see, but 16155-1A, the legal description is Lot 2, Netherland replat blocks 36. Size of the lot is 11,761 square feet, the acreage is .27. The boundary is, it's bounded by Fourth Street on the north, Peak to Peak on the west, Third on the south and Caribou on the east. Open space required is 25%, which would equal 2940 square feet and the open space provided is 33%, which is 3939 square feet. The landscape plan. If you can see, we have along the fence that we have there, we have three aspen trees, five boulders. There is also planter beds in the front, outside the front door. And inside those, there will be three one-gowling flowering perennial shrubs and mulch. The remaining space is zera skate native grasses. Section 1633, which are the yard and bulk requirements, the setbacks. The front yard and street setback is 25 feet and you can see in front we have 26 where the driveway comes in from fourth. The side yard setback is five feet, which is on the south. And the rear yard setback is 15. So because the buildings are offset a little bit, they vary, but the one farthest to the south is 27.8, the next is 27 feet off the property line, the next one is 28.7 and the last one to the north is 27.1. You can see the CDOT setback in the right-of-way is 30 feet. So there is almost 50 feet of setback or actually a little over from Peak to Peak Highway to where the buildings are. The parking, we're next going to go through the parking, which if you can go back up a little bit to the top of the previous file, the file they were just on, Miranda, thank you. Um, so this is section 16155-1I. And it also has the refuse disposal. You can see before you enter the driveway, which is where the current driveway is, we'll have a trash and refuse area there for similar to what Tunston Village has there. We are required to have 13 parking spaces. And so we have one for each garage and then we have used the maximum size. Not everyone will have a truck, but we use pickup trucks for scale. There is a 22-inch, excuse me, 22-foot turn radius getting into the garage. And I believe that's all for this page, if you want to go to the next page, Miranda, thank you. And on this slide we'll cover section 16155, number C, the proposed land uses and their respective acreage. D, the location and size or building envelopes of the buildings. F, the density and type of dwellings. K, the location and design of proposed signs. And N, the anticipated utility requirements. The dwelling type, there will be two duplex townhomes for a total of four units. Each unit is three bedroom, two bath. The approximate square living feet of each unit is 1,491 square feet. The land use acreage is multifamily residential, .27 acreage. The anticipated utility requirements, there's an existing, or excuse me, a 200 amp electric service per unit and we will utilize existing gas tap, sewer tap and one-inch water tap, pending review of the town's engineers and their recommendations. The signage, prior to entering on the driveway, there is a space for a 30-inch by 30-inch sign on the north side next to the entrance. Each building is 42 feet by 41 feet, which gives a building footprint of 1744. And I believe that's it for this particular slide. Thanks, Miranda. Okay, on this particular side we'll be covering section 16155. Letter E, the architectural character of all buildings and structures, including their maximum height. And K, the exterior lighting plan. So this is the west view, if you were standing in front of the buildings, you would be looking west towards Peak to Peak Highway. The maximum height, the pitch has been modified from a 12-on-six to a 12-on-five pitch, which has a height of 28.4 inches. The architectural character, the buildings will have hardy siding and trim, wainscoting, reclaimed material from Little Bear School deconstruction and a Hippen Valley roof with architectural fiberglass shingles. And in the front we have a section, the skirt, which would be using reclaimed logs from the Little Bear deconstruction. Exterior lighting, each unit will have two sponsors on either side of the garage door and a flush mount porch light over the front entry, as well as a flush mount light outside the rear sliding door. Storage is provided inside each unit for all personal belongings. There will be storage under the stairs and also in the garage. And I believe that's all for this. We did address the 10-foot separation on that, you can see that was a requirement from the fire department, so they do comply with that requirement. Okay, next slide, thank you, Miranda. Okay, next slide, thank you, Miranda. We have no additional comments on this. This slide is really just to give the audience a visual representation of rendering of our design. Sure.
The concerns with the fence that the trustees have been talking about. Now, the road bed, Peak to Peak Highway road bed is in a neighborhood of five, between five and eight feet above the level of the lot that this is being built on. So the fences probably will not even reach the bottom part of the road bed. As you drive from Fort, leaving the brewery or anywhere over there, and heading to Peak to Peak, that's a pretty steep, you know, fairly high incline to get to the highway, Peak to Peak Road Bed. So we're, we have to drive down into this lot. So the fence, fences, I don't even think if we built a ten-foot fence would even interfere with anything. But we're not, we don't intend to do anything like such. Right now, I think the existing fence is like six-foot. And it is under this, under the road bed, road bed that's there. So just so you guys know that the site vision, and the way C dots got there right of way, they got a notch out of this corner of this lot. There's a notch taken, they added an extra thirty feet of sight right of way at that intersection. So their typical right-of-way is thirty from the edge of road. And so as it wraps around, then it jumps to sixty, just to take care of that intersection. So I think we'll be safe and not interfere with any vehicle sight distance.
Right, especially when you figure the buildings are set back towards the brewery line, right?
So I hope that plays up some stuff, please.
Okay, next slide, Miranda. Yeah, we might want to, this is maybe zoomed in a little too. This was a requirement. This complies with section sixteen one fifty-five, one B, which is proposed topographic character of the land at a contour level of two feet if the slope is less than ten percent. Spot elevations may be required if the land is too flat for contours and five feet if the slope is greater than ten percent. So we, again, this was a requirement. And we had a professional survey done by Flatiron's Engineering. And this is the survey that they gave us.
That's the topo map of the land right there. And then our preliminary drainage plan showed some changes to the grading plan to make the drainage, to get the drainage to flow north and into a test basin.
And we'll get to that, just, but in any event, this topo map is a requirement. So we wanted to show that we complied and met that requirement. Next slide, Miranda. Actually, this memo, and I won't go into a lot of detail. We included a drainage memo prior to the August twenty-fifth meeting of the Planning Commission. We hired this civil engineering firm and they did an exhaustive thirty-page report. We included three pages here, just so that you would have an idea. But we did want to say that from their initial valuation, the drainage is, the increase in runoff is, their calculations are very slight. They give roof, the existing roof structure is like eighteen fifty square feet or nineteen hundred approximately. And because the whole lot has the pea gravel on it from the preschool, you get credit for so much pervious material and so forth. So with that removal and the addition of our two buildings, the net drain increase is zero point five CFS percentage. And again, we just wanted to touch on to say that there will be, you know, we weren't required to provide anything regarding drainage at this stage. But because there were some questions raised as far as how would this be, we did go ahead and hire an engineer. And the next slide will show a preliminary plan. It's not a final, but just to show a way that we will go ahead and have a stamped engineered drawing by a professional engineering firm. This is a preliminary plan. But when we go determining our building plans, which is the next step, should we get approved to move forward, then that, this is a requirement. So at that point in time, there will be a stamped engineered plan from this engineering firm. And then I'll just go ahead and do a quick wrap-up. You can go ahead, Miranda, to the next slide. So we did want to just summarize a few things. We've had some dialogue with the neighbors on Third Street and with Chris, our neighbor with the brewery. Everyone very nice. I know we have a difference of opinion and it's nothing personal on our part. Definitely, everyone has been very courteous and we've had some good discussions. Chair Cornell had asked us to reach out to our neighbors, which we did. We did initially plan, I mean, we bought this property back in February. March meeting was canceled due to COVID. And we had had some initial discussions with Cynthia about reaching out to the neighbors, knocking on doors and so forth. But COVID, we felt like that could do more harm than help us. So we did refrain from that. So it is just recently that, since we've had our presentations beginning in May, excuse me, that we've had dialogue with some of our neighbors. So we did just want to stress, we met with the concerned neighbors on Third Street and the brewery. We've integrated their feedback as appropriate, specifically with regard to height. You may not be aware, but since we first presented our plans in May, we've modified our plans now twice regarding to height. Our first presentation in May, we had a gable roof on our structures and the height was thirty-four feet, because we knew the code allowed for thirty-five. Then we reduced that down in our July presentation to a hip roof. And so that lowered the height to thirty feet. After our July presentation, we revised our plan again. And we have changed the pitch down now. With the August presentation, we actually revised the pitch on the roof from a, we lowered it down to a five-tub, which has lowered the hip roof down to twenty-eight point four. We were previously at a six-twub pitch. So we are trying to balance that with slope of the roof, et cetera, snow load, et cetera. We've addressed the drainage concern by hiring a civil engineer. And just want to state that we do respect everyone's right to their opinion and to their point of view. But at the same time, we have respect for our own property development rights. We've been considerate with our neighbors by not maxing out the density, the lot usage, the open space, nor the height. And we do acknowledge our proposed plan will not exceed everyone. But it is well thought out, it is thorough, and has been well thought through. And overall, most importantly, it's reasonable. And it does comply with all PUD requirements and all municipal codes. We know that the Envision 2030 document, what's important is that establishing additional housing opportunities. And one of the accomplishments of the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees over the last decade has been to create additional housing. And we hope that Little Bear Village will be able to add to further that accomplishment. We want to thank you for letting us present tonight and for your consideration of our project. And we hope we are able to move forward. You have any questions for us, we'll be happy to answer those now.
Ellen, Dennis, thank you very much for that presentation. Answered several of the questions I had already come up with or just hearing from you guys. So I'm gonna throw this open to the Board of Trustees. If any trustees have questions for Dennis or Ellen regarding their presentation, and we'll go in reverse order this time, starting with Tanya.
Oh, okay. Sure, I was just getting ready. So I had a few questions. As far as sustainability goes, which is also a big part of the Envision Plan, have you any, in the design of your building, is there any consideration as part as like passive solar? How the ecological footprint of your new construction is going to be? How efficient is it? What have you taken into consideration on that level?
I think just our, I would start by saying our, just our footprint alone. I mean, we don't add too much to the existing footprint that's already there. As far as sustainability, one of the things that we are committed to materials as we're able to, so as we stated with our design, we hope a lot of the materials that we're able to salvage out of the Little Bear preschool into these new structures.
And I had a few questions about the design of your building. I don't see like a whole lot of windows in these units. I don't see any patios or terraces, balconies, or private areas for people to put a lawn chair out and enjoy our environment, have a barbecue. There's not even a communal area for that sort of activity. Why did you design your building in that way?
There is several places. If you want to go back to that slide, Miranda, we can point those out to Tanya. So in the front, there's planter area and a French porch. We don't have a, actually, we don't have a rear. But there is a patio in the back and there is a, each unit has a fenced-in yard, approximately ten.
Okay, it's not clear in that drawing, so each unit has a little yard.
It does, yeah.
And how big is each unit? That's what I was trying to understand with Cynthia. The building is seventeen hundred square feet?
The sound was just a little, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, do you hear me?
Ask me a question again, Tanya.
Oh, yeah, seems she heard me. My question was, I didn't really quite understand the Cynthia. How big is each unit, square footage, square footage-wise? It's like they're not, they have a little explanation, a triangle, I think they're offline.
Yeah, we may have lost, well, the.
Can you hear us now?
Dennis, I'm muting you so that we can hear the question, so go ahead.
Oh, my question is, how big is each unit? Square footage?
Each rental unit will be approximately seventeen hundred square feet.
No, it's living square feet, the living square feet of each unit, is that your question?
Yeah, so the three-bedroom, each three-bedroom apartment is seventeen hundred square feet.
Each three-bedroom, the building footprint, so just the footprint alone is seventeen forty-four. But the living space on two floors is fourteen ninety-one. The garage takes up.
Because they don't have the garages.
Right.
Okay, so each apartment, the three bedrooms are written fourteen hundred square feet.
Almost fifteen, correct.
Okay, gotcha. So are each of these, I was under the impression that when each building, there was only two buildings.
Each, each building has two townhomes for a total of four residential units.
Okay, all right. And yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's all for my, my questions. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Tanya. Lindsay, trustee Danforth.
Hi, thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. And I really do appreciate the efforts you've gone through to talk to the neighbors, to reduce the height of your plans, as well as to not max out your building footprint size you could do on that property. So I think, I think you guys are really doing a good job with, with bringing all that together. I am slightly concerned about the, the height. And I, you know, I've lived pretty close to this location. And I want to be, I want to be sensitive to the neighborhood. And I'm wondering if it's possible to do a view shed analysis, to be able to see how much is going to be blocked? Because I'm not, I'm not sure how much it's going to block or how much it'll change the skyline in that area or the view. Would it be possible to get a kind of rough view shed analysis done?
I'd stop. Is that a, is that an engineer?
A U shed?
No, view.
A view shed? Oh, I don't know about any view corridors as far as. Well, yeah, I mean, I guess you could, probably an architect could provide, could come up with some kind of stand up on a ladder and take a picture or something. And from, and take and see what that, see what it's going to look like. They're making something to get.
Do you know, could you, I guess we'd have to look at cost too. I mean, we've now gone through quite a few engineers. But we could definitely look at that and you would be able to provide some names of engineering firms that do this? I guess that's a question.
Yeah, this is certainly, I think, an unusual request. And for me, I'm actually familiar with the, the process and the programs that are used to do these. It's more popular in kind of urban settings, especially with taller buildings, that this kind of analysis is done. But it should be fairly simple. There are elevation models that you can load in that will represent the entire area. And then you can just draw in the height of your building and kind of like a rough sketch. And it should be able to show you from say a height of five feet, five to six feet where somebody might be standing. You should be able to see in the program what, what would be blocked and what you'd be able to see. It, it's not, obviously not a requirement, it's just something I think that could be used to help both do your case and the neighborhood to say, you know, yes, this is going to change the views, but it's not going to block your view of this peak or this mountain. I just think it'd be a gesture of goodwill.
We do just want to mention also, there are several two-story buildings in the area across on Peak to Peak. They're multifamily. There's two actually duplex that just, one of them just sold. And the government building is the firehouse. Again, that is directly across the street. And that is probably at the, at the maximum height allowed. Karen Blakemore is a commissioner. And she did bring up in the August meeting, at the last meeting, that she had done research. I guess there is a duplex that was just done by, his last name is Fruth, over, Fruth, a fruit, over on First Street. That is a rental and that one is also twenty-eight feet. So that is also in the, in the records from our last meeting. Were there any other questions, Lindsay?
Not, not for me.
Thank you, Lindsay. Julian?
One quick question, are these buildings natural gas or total electric?
Natural gas.
Okay, so you're, you're not thinking long-term then? All right, interesting. I noticed that as I read through the drainage document, that there are clear problems associated with it. And yet those are issues you will be required to solve, as you know, before you get a building permit. What were some of the issues that prevented a common drainage plan with your nearest neighbor?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last question? I'm sorry, could you repeat that last question? You cut out.
What were some of the issues that made it impossible to come up with a common drainage plan with your nearest neighbor, the knotted roof? May have some network issues here.
Ellen and Dennis, are you still there?
We are, we're here, but the, but the commissioner's question, trustee's question keeps going in and out. The muting keeps coming off.
So the, the question was, what prohibited you from being able to establish a drainage plan with knotted roof?
We, I would just, my discussion with Chris through that, we looked at it historically, because there's an existing, like, I thought, property line ditch. And, and so when we looked at the drainage for that and it was, ended up being on his property, not, so it's not a shared ditch or anything. We were advised without a drainage easement needed, that would not be a good idea. Because down the road, if we're using that ditch and the brewery gets sold to a new owner, there's no, there's no needed easement. We could be in trouble. Same with us. We sell that, we sell us, we sell, there's no drainage easement and there's just an issue. So we will, you know, we can't, let's get the engineer to pick out a drainage plan that we can maintain on our property.
Right, and, right, and we felt it was cleaner and more positive to focus on whatever issues we had with our property and to address those through a stamped engineer.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Julian. Jonathan?
Hey, I just wanted to thank you all for your presentations, especially addressing some of the concerns you heard discussed already in terms of fencing, drainage and all that. I have only really one question from a building perspective is, when you discuss with the engineer and switch from a gable roof design and to the hip roof and switch your pitch from the five, or six on 12 to the five on 12, was there a discussion of dropping it to a four on 12? Was that still possible from an engineering perspective with the hip roof? A lot of the neighboring houses utilize a four on 12. You wouldn't want to go any lower than that with the pitch because that would require you basically by building standards, more underlayment and specific materials. Once you go below a four on 12, you're pretty much a flat roof. But four on 12s are proven in the town of Nederland to shed water, also withstand the snow load. And it is a very, very common pitch for a lot of the houses on the Third Street neighborhood. If it was possible to reduce your pitch to a four on 12, would you all be willing to do that to show some extra good faith to your neighbors? It might reduce the.
Based on what the, with the engineer, yeah, but I mean, if what you say is true and if we can.
Yeah, I think he's correct about that. And I know a three on 12 was beyond the capability of, of fiberglass shingles to protect the roof.
Yeah, are four on 12 required without having the need for TPO? I'm a builder, so that's, this is why I'm asking from the perspective of addressing the neighborhood concerns. If you could drop it to.
Yeah, and then, you know, I had a discussion with one of the neighbors the other day and he was like, man, if you could just squeeze a couple more feet out of that roof. And I said, well, you know, I know, I know we're limited on, on our pitch, but I'll go as low as we can, the engineer allows. And like you said, four on 12 is probably what we can get.
That if the engineer says that's fine and there's other examples of it where, we'd be okay with.
Cool, I think that, yeah, that would be my only maybe comment. If the engineer could allow that with your hip roof, it would show that much more good faith to that discussion in the neighborhood and the concern on height. And wouldn't necessarily be more of a burden than already has to be addressed when, if this gets approved, you guys actually have to do floor pans, building plans and all that fun, yes. So that's my only question. I'm glad to hear that you'd be willing to, if you can be.
Thank you, Jonathan. Before I go to, before I jump up here to Eric, I'm just going to follow on that question real quick because it's on the same topic. If they did go to the four on 12, and I guess this is actually maybe a question more for Jonathan since he's our, our resident expert on this. Do you have, I'm trying to pull up real quickly here with the size of the building, the, the width of it is. Do you have an idea on what that would drop? Would that drop two feet, three feet, four feet? What's, what's the change in overall height of the building dropping to four through 12? Or four by 10, four by 12?
You might get a couple more feet out of it. You could probably drop it to 26, four. That's really going to be the engineer that has to address that. Because this is a hip roof, so they already went to the hip roof to, to drop the angle more. There's a lot of math that comes into those hips about how much it would actually drop the maximum peak. But if you look at this, what you're going to have is you're going to have two peaks that are actually at that 28.6. Their ridge line, their drip line on the house and the majority of the roof line will be below that. If they were able to drop to a four on 12, their peak could probably get down to 26 feet, which means that that's probably, you know, those two little peaks on the house, the majority of the roof line would still be below the 24, which seems to be the, the height that is kind of where the brewery would sit as well as line of sight restriction in terms of visibility created by the existing fire station. So it's an engineering question and they would have to go back to the engineering to really establish that. But it's kind of the last thing that could be done in terms of planning to still keep what they're desiring here and all the effort they put forward and also be that last thing that they could do for goodwill toward the neighbors that wouldn't affect any of the other plans they have yet done.
Well, thank you very much, Jonathan. Any questions? Trustee comes this mail. Eric, you're next up.
Yes, more, more just a couple of things that I hoped these folks could speak to rather than direct questions. You know, in terms of, I know that this is not very clear in the town ordinances, but in, in terms of what our comprehensive plan for the town of Nederland actually is, this plan development does arguably fail to get a couple of our goals in our, in our 2013 comprehensive plan. And that is, there is this notion of sustainability, which I don't think that this plan really develops a strong concept for, you know, sustainable homes using this technology and also latest best practices in terms of sustainability. Also in terms of looking into the future of what that's going to be. I don't think these homes are, are leading edge in any sense. And most of our comprehensive plans, discussion of the need for diversifying our housing types and higher density zoning have to do with affordability. And so like you folks will speak to, I guess, is whether or not you would be willing to address some of the concerns that are part of our code in the, in the sense that our code does refer to the comprehensive plan about sustainability and how you would be addressing the need for affordable housing in our area, because it doesn't seem to me that these units would be particularly affordable.
You're correct in that they would be market rate. We are a private couple. We have no grants from any governmental agencies for affordable housing. We have no partnership with any quasi-governmental agencies for affordable housing. So this is, this is not an affordable housing unit. Our understanding is there were just 26 of those built by the Board of County Housing Authority. So no, this was a private purchase, privately funded, et cetera. I don't know as far as sustainability. I mean, I, these are going to be brand new, safe units. As I mentioned earlier, the Bowen report cites, you know, many old homes, actually dilapidated homes, you know, that are for rent and they're smaller, they're not up to code. This is an old mining town and, you know, a lot of the, the homes are extremely old. So as far as being able to provide safe, new housing, we think that's a plus for the town of Nederland. Obviously, you'll, the Board of Trustees will be deciding that, but at this point, they're, they're not affordable housing. And in our design, we, we think we've designed safe homes that comply with current code and that these four units would be a welcome addition to the rental of the town of Nederland. I'm sorry, Dennis had something in the back, go ahead.
Well, I was going to mention the side party siding that's, that's the, that's all these, all the new construction are using for sustainability aspect of that. It's, it's very fire resistant. It's a cement fiber board that's weather resistant and doesn't, it holds color over 40 years. And, and that's a, a very good product that, you know, we use in our office building. The, the buildings itself are two by six envelopes with all the latest insulation values and they star rated window, insulated windows. And, and we've, we've had gas available and we plan on using some gas like for cooking. The furnaces are probably going to be electric furnaces for the overall safety of having an electric furnace instead of running into an issue with an old furnace down the road that starts to leak a little bit of carbon monoxide or something like that. So we do have electric furnaces for that. And these buildings are, do have a good southern exposure. And solar is not out of the question right now. Only, the only solar is the batteries that we've got to come up with. I know they've got some better lithium batteries, but they're still pretty, cost prohibitive. We've got some hunting cabins that are solely on solar and they work well as long as the, those acid core batteries hold up their charges. So that's still not, that's not a question not to have solar. It's not built into the beginning of this budget.
Thank you. And I just, I just had just a couple more things. Just quickly, very quickly, thank you, Lindsay and Jonathan. You've covered two points that I wanted to ask about and use technical terms that I would not have known. So thank you for knowing your stuff there. Very helpful. And also in terms of town code and whether or not this project, you know, meets town code is not actually decided yet. So I would say that the statement that the, that the project meets town code is inaccurate. And I just want to point out to everyone, section 16151, which is the purpose of the article in which PUDs are discussed. And part of that purpose is to preserve the natural and scenic features of open areas. And we are well within our jurisdiction under section 16158A5, which Cynthia was kind enough to read out to us regarding the natural character of the land and its overall compatible architectural design. So I do think that that is a judgment yet to be made. And I do think that if the pitch can be lowered and the overall height of this building can be lowered, it should be. Because compatibility to me, to me means compatibility, not just with the, you know, actual buildings that are next door, which I'm not sure this is compatible with, but also with the people who live in them, which I think is far more important. And I do believe that as well within our jurisdiction here to, to judge. So if you have any more thoughts on that, I would love to hear them. But as far as that's concerned, I do believe that we don't actually have to ask this roof. You can say that it must be.
Thank you, Eric. Alan? Trustee apt? There you go.
Yes, thank you for your presentation and for answering all these questions. I guess the sound connection that I have made it difficult to understand what you were saying about solar. Are you saying that you will have solar panels with battery backup? And I guess you do have energy star windows. Are they on the south side where they will get some passive solar gain? Those are my questions.
The way the buildings are oriented, the south sides, so I mean, there's a, I think a couple of bathroom, bathroom window and, and a bedroom window that are on the south side. And they're energy star. They will produce whatever, they're going to get their solar, whatever they can produce. Now, as far as the solar panel goes, they're not in, they're not a part of this project right now. I'm not adverse to adding solar.
Okay, so the, the windows that are on the bathroom and the bedroom, how big are they?
They're three, they're 30 by 30. The bathroom windows are 30 by 30 and the bedroom windows is 36 by 48, something like that.
Okay, and then the living space, where are the windows for the, the living space? Are they on the north side or the? Or are they?
Living space is downstairs.
West and it's a sliding door out to the patio. So that is. Right, right. So when you walk in, so the front is facing the brewery, so facing east. So you go in either through the front door or the garage and then you go upstairs. But if you continue downstairs walking west, it's a big eat-in, open concept kitchen, living room area combined dining, all, you know, after the staircase and after the garage, the rest of the first floor is that big open concept area. And then directly out that, you would walk out to the patio, go through your sliding doors.
Okay, so it's, it's, orientation is east-west? Or is it southeast, northwest?
Buildings are oriented east-west. So in that, in that slide that Miranda has up where you see the driveway, you know, and you see the garages, that is facing east.
The garages are facing east? Okay. Well, it's too bad the orientation is a little, isn't a little bit more north-south with most of the windows on the south. My house faces southeast and we get a lot of solar gain, which is great in the winter and the summer, you know, you have to use window coverings. So I don't know if you can orient it a little bit better for solar gain, but that would make.
Well, setback coming to plan. So we've looked at it a lot of different ways.
And then that one notch.
Right.
That the CDA has out of the corner of that rock that really kind of.
We looked into trying to get that, either to buy it for special use and we couldn't. It does, yeah.
All right, thank you. I think having those, those energy star windows is great and hopefully the sliding glass door will also be very energy efficient. If you can get a, a storm door arrangement on the sliding door, that will help a lot in terms of making the place energy efficient as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. And of course, as usual, you draw back to being the last one to ask questions is everyone else asked all the really good questions about the, the viewscapes and things like that. But the one, well, I do have one question for you guys that has come up with some conversations with members of the Netherlands public, residents in general, but also just kind of looking at these 3D renderings that you have here. And it's kind of fitting into the, does this fit into the, the general theme of Nederland and into the scope of now? Because these do look like something I would find down below, kind of monolithic structures, blank walls. They don't really have any, I mean, you've got the. They don't really have any, I mean, you've got the reclaimed timbers from Wild Bear on the one side, things like that. But I'm curious about sort of, have you given thought to how better to, or how you intend to fit these into the, the tone of Netherland in terms of color schemes, things like that?
Yes, we have. And you'll have to forgive our renderings and it's not possible to always choose the best colors and so forth. As far, each building will have a skirt. I mean, in, in the front, it's the logs for the front entry, that's our plan. But the rest of it could be stone, could be metal. Wendy Williams did some cute stuff with metal skirts around her buildings. That's, that's a possibility. Colors, alpine, you know, it's, it's gonna be natural, it's not gonna be, you know, red or pink or something like that. But it's gonna be, you know, muted hues like, well, yeah, I mean, the front building, I mean, they, they had some good color schemes. It's like a, it's like a beige with a light beige along with that, it's not a sage green. I mean, maybe more of a forest green. So those are the, is the color palette that we, that we were looking at. And again, the skirts will either be, it'll either be continued around the rest of the building. We don't have logs, you know, enough logs, we don't believe we're gonna be able to do the entire skirt with that. But what we have looked at is either a stone skirt, possibly a metal, something like that. And as Dennis mentioned, the hardy siding. And then the, the color of the roof, oh, and we honestly haven't gotten into, you know, shingle colors, et cetera, but it will be a natural color, something that blends. You know, it's not gonna be a bright blue roof or something like that. But to be honest, this, this process, I mean, it does, it does take a lot of time to go through and, and meet the requirements for the, for the PUD. And it's been a lot on our plate, plus additionally getting different engineers and so forth and looking at various things like the drainage and stuff that we, at the beginning, we didn't know we, you know, we'd be doing this so soon. So that, that's really been our focus to address, you know, what we had to in these, in these meetings. So, and that's what I can tell you at this point, we don't have any, use any harsh weird colors on these buildings.
That answered my question. So thank you very much for that. I'm gonna just give this here, you know, a chance, any other questions that come up for the Board of Trustees, for the applicants, as they've heard the other trustees, before we go to public comment on this? It'll be more, we'll just kind of start speaking up since we've all had a chance to speak once.
Yeah. Quick question for the couple. Were you planning on stick framing this or was this gonna be prefab modulars that you're gonna bring in and pop together? Or are you looking at building from ground up?
From ground up, stick frame.
Sweet. That's it? Thank you.
Glad we have you on here, Jonathan, for these professional questions. Any other trustees have questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead first.
All right. Well, anyway, so these buildings, the entry will be on the west side. So they're basically facing west, correct?
No. They're facing the entry. Actually, this slide that Miranda has up right now, it shows the garage and the front door. That front door does not face west, it faces east.
Right. But the living quarters are facing west, like the sliding glass door.
Yes, that is the, that's actually the fact.
Right. You know, maybe it's too late to do anything about this, but, you know, I live a block or two from this and wind from the west is fierce. And so, you know, if you have the living spaces on the west side in the winter, you're gonna have a lot of very cold wind blowing on the sliding glass door in the living spaces. So this is an observation, that's the prevailing wind. So and maybe, maybe you can't put that on the east side, I don't know. Cause I'm sure you've done a lot of design with the driveway and all that. But you are gonna be exposing that west side to some fierce wind.
We understand the wind. We're, we live south of town and that's why we knew the difference. But we're, we're not wind.
Also, we didn't wanna have the garages.
Yeah. You're facing the garage to the, facing the garage to the wind and you open up your garage and it goes to the wind, so that's maybe more out.
I guess, I don't know, six to one, half dozen to the other.
Well, there's a difference, this is Cynthia, there's a difference between how you front and your frontage is, is the direction you're facing. That's your, this is off a peak-to-peak highway. And the setbacks on the property, the minimum setback is twenty-five feet, the minimum setback rear is fifteen. So as you design the site, you have to consider your frontage as the direction that you're facing and entering versus, you know, respective to those setbacks. So that's something to take into consideration in terms of how you're fronting. But definitely the wind plays into, you know, the direction of how you want your doors, something you should consider.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, the altitude of highway will also introduce a burnt holly effect, which may introduce very unusual turbulence at that point.
Tanya, did I hear you have a question as well?
Oh, yeah. Well, right off the bat, which is considered the front, the garage side or the sliding glass door side?
Front door is next to the garage.
Oh, okay. You're gonna have twenty-five feet on that side from, but fifteen from the highway-ish? Or?
Actually, twenty, twenty-six on that, on that side.
How much from the highway?
It varied between twenty-seven, our property line, twenty-eight, because they're offset buildings.
Okay. Gotcha. Jonathan asked if we're modular homes or, or gonna be built, you know, and I think it's just a testament to your design where it, it looks like a modular home. Have you guys thought about adding any kind of depth to the building in the sense of with the windows or decking or terraces? It just seems like it's built for efficiency of your cost, since it's not affordable home. It just, it looks, it looks like a drop in house. I don't know, it's just a comment, that's really, I mean, there's nothing, there's no code in town that says that things have to look nice. But, um, yeah, I guess we've pretty much exhausted everything. I'm gonna say that I'm, I'm more on the Eric side of the fact that I know you could design this to twenty-four feet with a little bit of creativity. And beyond view, you're also gonna be creating huge shadows in that area where people are gonna be losing sun, since you're, you're at the west, block in the west, which is where a lot of our afternoon light comes in. So it is a consideration and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. This is Chris Larson again, and I actually had one last question come up as I was looking at the drawings as they came around. There's one piece of the chapter sixteen planned unit development code, sixteen one fifty-eight, that I haven't seen really addressed in your plans. So I'd just like you to quickly address the, the question about pedestrian bicycle circulation, outdoor recreation. I don't see, is there sidewalks? Is there connectivity into the local neighborhood? I saw the fence that seemed to go fully around the building. So what is there in terms of access for non-motorized transportation in particular?
They would walk out through the gate on the north, on the north side if someone doesn't happen to have.
Yeah. I mean, the property's surrounded by three, by two other proper properties. So really the only access is through the driveway up on Fourth Street, which is, which is dirt roads, you know, it's a pedestrian, very pedestrian, dang-like road.
And, and also, when we first began this process, you know, we went through these with Cynthia and she did say this is like a, not a stock PED, that may not be the right word, but that not every single thing, these are, could be used, you know, for, you know, twenty or thirty homes in a PED much bigger, where you would have bicycle pass and so forth, because this is a very small PED, it's only four units, that this may not be applicable.
Certainly. I, I just, you know, and kind of in terms, in line with some of the things that trustee Taylor brought up about thinking towards the future as we try to move away from single occupancy vehicles, move away from natural gas, just kind of future-proofing this in some ways and seeing that it has some thought put into it in terms of how we're gonna do without cars or without natural gas. So that was more.
Yeah. I mean, we could have gates if somebody wants to, like, you know, at another section. I forgot to mention too, somebody, somebody had asked about the, the type of fence and, and we agree with that, not the whole closed-in look, but that, that look where you can open. Yeah. And we really liked the fence, the property directly to the south, it's kind of on a triangle piece and we liked their fence from the beginning, we would like to do something like that, just for, just for reference.
All right. Again, thank you guys very much for your, for your presentation, your patience with our questions and for answering all them. I'm gonna open the floor up now to public comment. As with all our action items, any member of the public is welcome to speak for three minutes on this topic. Simply give us your name, let us know if you're a Netherland resident or not, and then let us know what you're thinking about this, this planned unit development. And so I'm looking for people to raise their hands or to begin speaking and we will try and organize this since we've got a pretty full room here tonight.
This is Mandy. I'd be happy to go first.
There we go, Mandy, welcome.
Starting my video here. So, you know, for this project, why should we allow this project to change the skyline of the north entry of our town? And why should we allow these owners to be allowed, force us as neighbors who live here to trade our mountain views and our sun's warmth for a towering Broomfield building? We all know the two-story buildings that exist here, that Ellen mentions that are twenty-eight feet high, block nobody's view, since they do not reside in the middle of the Cariboo Valley. They are on the sides of the valley and the forest. The firehouse is across the road, far enough west where they do not block anybody's view over here. We all know this building that's gonna go in will block everyone's view to live here east of this building, since it's in the middle of the skyline. The owners state that they care about the Netherland community, but in reality, they've only upset all the neighbors on the east side of the property with planning two stories that will tower over all of us. There was no effort on the owner's part to contact neighbors until after the planning commission urged them to do, COVID or not. And after they did contact us, they still insisted on their plan, even though all the neighbors disagreed. Just because this is legal doesn't make it right. If these owners cared about Netherland, they would try to work with the neighbors. Instead, they insist on what a big favor they've done by making at twenty-eight feet, which still blocks all our mountain. The Netherland design standards, which I understand are not required, do suggest that new residents, residences should respect the scale and mimic the historic character of neighboring adjacent dwellings. This two-story project does, just does the opposite and matches nothing in this neighborhood. We are not Broomfield and we do not want to be. If the owners cared so much about this community, as they have quoted many times, they would follow these suggested design standards developed by our town. My house and Andrew's house next door used to be the Little Bear School. Our houses are over a hundred years old. My house is two stories, but it's only fifteen feet high. Wendy Williams chose to build one-story apartments without garages and they are not dilapidated as the owner suggests that many surrounding apartments are. They're practically brand new, cause I've been in them, cause I know my neighbors. We have chosen to preserve the character of this neighborhood because we have respect for our neighbors despite the planning commission telling us that we could also pop up our houses to thirty-five feet to get our views back. In addition, how will you prevent six couples from living in one unit in order to make it affordable? Let's get real, I don't know anybody in Netherland who can afford twenty-eight hundred dollars a month. These luxury, affordable apartments do not solve housing problems in Netherland. Where would these people park if there are six adults per unit? That would require more than twelve spaces. This project should be limited to one story. We are not against housing in Netherland, but we are against buildings that do not match the character of our neighborhood and disrespects all our neighbors who live here at the sole expense of somebody's, somebody's personal profit. And furthermore, I want to suggest that Netherland revisit the height of the buildings allowed in this side of town. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Mandy.
Hi, Christopher, my name's Jeff, I'd love to go next.
There you go. Please go right ahead.
Perfect, thanks. So everyone, Board of Trustees, thank you very much. My name is Jeff Lynch. I am a neighbor. I've lived in Netherland for, I've lived in the house I'm in now for nine years, I'm within a half a mile, but I've lived in this community, actually in this community, unlike we've talked about, for about twenty-one years. And as Mandy said, like, really, why do we need to do this? I think going to look at the characteristics of our beautiful town, you know, everything that's been said here over the little bit, and I apologize if I missed anything, cause it's Nuggets game seven, so go Nuggets, so I chimed in here. So, but with that said, everything that's been said in the half an hour that I've been on is about building a building. We're talking about people living in a quote "building" in Netherland, like, that's never really happened before. It doesn't sound familiar. Is it necessary? To give you perspective on who I am, I live here, I work from here, I work from home in a very real professional job, but I rarely leave town. And this is permanent, you know, like, once we actually make this decision, it, it's what it's gonna be moving forward. And, you know, even Ellen said, this is an old mining town. You know, look at what you see on the screen right now. Does that scream old mining town? And then, you know, so there's been so much reference to the affordable housing and stuff, and I know Mandy was there as well, but, you know, this is for personal profit and really nothing more. And, and really what it comes down to is like, you know, I loved the comments earlier, you know, these monolithic structures, right? These are uncharacteristic of our town, they really don't fit in. And some of you might remember me from when I made the similar comment on the planning commission. And that's just that, like, this is a beautiful space, so many of us know each other and it's a great small town. And when these people move into this place, they're gonna think they're joining that and they're gonna be those people. These are not part of the community, no one who lives here would actually suggest this. I know we've heard about like the hunting or whatnot, but like, the reality is, and I think Mandy said it perfect before me, is that like, this isn't representative of really anyone who's here and this is for nothing more than personal profit. And in the graphic that's on the screen right now, I, I love those trees, cause they're gonna get decimated by C dot. So welcome to the winter, the wind blows, as somebody else mentioned. And, you know, just on a side note, my eight-year-old, who's, all he knows is Netherland and loves it, he cries. He hates the affordable housing. He's like, why'd they build that? And I explained why and that it's necessary for our town. It's really isn't that. And I'll leave you with the same comment I left the planning commission and that this is western Boulder County, it's not Boulder West. Really, why does this need to happen for personal profit? Thank you for the, to the Board of Trustees, I appreciate the time, have a great day.
Thank you, Jeff. Next?
Andrew Bliss.
Andrew, you're up next, all right.
Thanks so much. I live at four fifty-one West Third Street. Thank you, Board of Trustees. I could tell by your comments and questions that you're thoughtfully approaching this proposal. I also give my thanks to staff, they clearly know what they're doing. And Miranda specifically has gone above and beyond to keep me notified about this project. I also want to thank the developers for investing in our community, I do believe they have good intentions. I moved here because it's a funky town with historic architecture and beautiful surroundings. I didn't feel at home with the character of development in Broomfield, which is where we moved from. We are new residents, I'm very excited to raise our two boys here and we're currently investing over seventy thousand dollars to make sure our hundred-year-old home stays here for years to come. I'll be honest, I first approached this project with the hopes that we could save the historic Little Bear School structure. I've given up on that now and would like to meet the developers halfway. I asked tonight that the Board of Trustees modify, modify their agenda item to approve the PUD under the condition of it being no higher than twenty-four feet. I respect the developers' property rights, but they're asking for a density increase, which does allow the Board of Trustees to place a condition on their approval of the PUD. I don't think the question is just, does this meet code? It is also, does this fit in with the character of this neighborhood? I think what you are hearing tonight from neighbors and trustees is that it does not. I'm not asking you to deny this proposal, rather that I'm asking you to be diligent about how this town develops and asking you to be responsive to reasonable requests from our residents. I strongly believe that this board has the ability to apply a condition. I strongly believe that this board has the ability to apply a condition on your approval, which could include a height limit of twenty-four feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else like to speak?
I'll speak.
Oh, please, identify yourself and go off to your minutes.
First off, I'll thank the trustees for taking pub, public comments tonight on this development. My name is Scott Papich. My spouse and I own and we reside full-time in a house at 470 West Third Street, close to the, the old Little Bear School and this property that we're discussing tonight. As you can see, we and quite a few of our neighbors have attended several of the planning commission meetings to provide feedback on this development. Each of us has brought forward concerns around various issues. Increased traffic density, drainage, parking, the whole thing. But across all these concerns, there is one concern, as you can see, that we continue to hang on to. I think we all have it in common and that's the height of these buildings. So, despite what the current codes allow, we have all expressed a very clear displeasure that these buildings will encroach visually upon the scenic features of the surrounding area. Those words I'm using specifically because they come directly from the planning commission's agenda information memorandum for this proposal. For this afternoon, I emailed a very simple photograph to the trustees. The photo was taken from Third Street in front of my house. And in that photo, you see two mountains to the northwest. Mount Albion and Kiowa Peak, the ladder being over thirteen thousand feet. I look at these mountains every day, I really do, and that view is part of why we live here. Nobody wants to lose even a modest mountain view because once it's gone, it's gone for good, at least from where we live. We bought our humble little fifteen-foot tall house here on this unassuming dirt street, I'm talking about Third Street, for very likely the same reasons that many other people came here. Neighborhood has character, it's in the mountains and it's not in the suburbs, and we love this place. We've committed a hundred percent to this. We don't just own here, we are here every day. We look up at the surrounding hills and the mountains every day. Dennis, you and I had the happenstance of meeting face-to-face just yesterday. I think we had a pretty good conversation. I appreciate the ideas you brought up and to share just a bit of it right here, I very much encourage you to explore the idea of further modifying the slope of your roof in order to get the height of your project down a number of feet. You'll still be the tallest thing around, but it will help you and your development fit in with the character of this neighborhood. Ellen and Dennis, I know you have a home somewhere near town. I think Ellen, you told me it's south of town somewhere. So imagine for a moment that somebody opted to build something tall between the windows of your house and the best view you have of the mountains, you know, the view that you moved here for. And just imagine swapping that view for a front row view of somebody else's roof shingles. I know you don't want that, not for yourselves. And I just want to say, this is a real neighborhood that you were preparing to build into. And good neighborhoods are built on decent compromise. And as one of the people who came here to this neighborhood for this view, I'm asking, can you please just consider us also in this situation? I appreciate that you've done some work. You brought it down to twenty-eight point four feet so far. I'm not asking you to sacrifice footprint. I am asking you to compromise a little on height in the interest of the neighborhood. Please work with us. Please bring your roof height down at least four or five feet. It's a small price to pay in this important course of compromising, but the neighbors were already here.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for hearing me.
Would anyone else like to speak during public comment?
I would like to speak, please.
Yes, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Chris Marcio. I live at 262 Hummer Drive and I am the owner of Knotted Root Brewery Company located at 250 North Cariboo Street, directly east and the most immediate neighbor to this proposed project. I'm not going to speak to redundance. I will echo many of the concerns and, you know, thoughts, especially as well-spoken as Andrew's and Scott's were. You know, I just, I was actually a part of that meeting. I actually invited Scott over to meet with Dennis. Dennis has been very open to communication with me as a neighbor, which I really appreciate. And I will come out and say I support his housing project. Like everyone else, I would like to see it a little lower. And John, trustee John Baumhauer, who is a Green Mountain College classmate of mine, go Eagles, he mentioned the sightline and the sight back in terms of the location of the building versus sightline as it relates to the firehouse, the pitch of the roof. Essentially, our building at the peak is twenty feet, but if their building is twenty-three or twenty-four feet and it is set that much further back, it should not encroach on the neighbor's view. So, if that site assessment, that trustee, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your last name, but Lindsay, proposed is done, and that is an appropriate viewpoint that can get all of their square footage. They can be within their legal right to charge what they wish for the amount of energy and money as it takes to put into a project like that. Believe me, I know what it takes to put money and heart and soul into a project, and also the difficulty of being met with resistance from neighbors. So, I feel for both people involved here, but I think ultimately the decision to lower the height of the, of the development project to not impede on the view of the neighbors, to reduce, to reduce our sunlight impact as the most immediate neighbor in our view of these beautiful mountains, and also get what they want as developers, I think that seems to be the most reasonable approach that we can achieve as a working community. Thank you for your time and look forward to being neighbors with Ellen and Dennis.
Thank you, Chris. Any further public comment? I am not hearing or seeing any further public comments, so I will bring this back to the board of trustees for comments and discussion. As a reminder, the board of trustees, what is before us tonight is the potential approval of this PUD with or without any additional restrictions or restrictions or compromises put in by the code sixteen, change sixteen, section one fifty-eight. So I would like to bring it back to the board, and it's kind of difficult to do sort of free-ranging discussion, obviously, with a Zoom. But I would like to just go through and talk to each member of the board or have each member of the board talk with regards to where they are standing on terms of approval of this PUD and if there are any restrictions they would like put on that or, yeah, any concerns that you would have, that you would like to have added to the planned unit development. I will kick it off this time, since I'm always the one that goes last. And I would just say that I think some of the things we've heard here are very much the concerns of the neighbors, the neighbors and the community. I think we all are on similar pages in terms of wanting a, wanting to work with the developers in terms of building new housing for Netherlands, but in such a way that fits within the fabric of the neighborhood, fits within the local, compatible, is compatible with the local design, architectural design and local neighborhood. And I think one thing we've heard from that is concerns regarding the overall height. Personally, I think a house, a, structures that are nearly twenty-nine or twenty-eight and a half feet tall, so one and a half ti, nearly one and a half times that of Knotted Root Brewery, which is their nearest neighbor, is concerning in that neighborhood. Hip roofs obviously will reduce that because that's only at the peak and the majority of the roof is gonna be well below that. But I like the ideas that trustee Baumhauer brought forth with regards to going to a four and twelve pitch perhaps. And I would very much like to see the applicants work to bring the height of the building down to, you know, twenty, the height, maximum height to twenty-four, twenty-five feet and look to see about engineering that with an actual view shed analysis so that we can see from the neighbors and from Third Street and from the areas, what would be the impact on their sun? Because not only is it views for them, but, you know, I know for fact that in the wintertime, it's the heat of the sun coming in from the west that is a significant warmth, warming, provides significant warmth to my house. So, suddenly cutting that off is a, you know, significant change in the heating of a house there on Third Street. So those would be the restrictions I'd like to see is lowering the house, the overall height of the building to twenty-four to twenty-five feet and a view shed analysis for the neighborhood. That said, I would love to hear from everyone else, and I'm gonna go kind of, I'm gonna call on a random order this time, so we're not just going up and down the list, and I will begin with trustee Taylor.
So, I think I have two key points. The first is, Tungston Village actually only has four affordable units. All the rest are market-based. So, that's not cogent to this issue, but everybody probably needs to know that. I'm not gonna talk about height, because I think it's secondary to the actual issue. The actual issue is that I'm seeing no evidence, after looking at this, and I'm not an architect, but I have a good feel for pattern recognition. Looking at this drawing, it's fairly clear to me that there's been no effort whatsoever made to actually blend this into the character of the adjoining neighborhoods. It is neither one or one and a half story in accordance with the eastern block of the houses, nor is it a two-story that matches the general architectural feel of the houses to the west. If this were matching one of those architectural styles, and if you look at them, you'll see they're reasonably consistent, I feel a lot better about this. If it were working as a transitional architectural style between the west side and the east side, I think that would be fine. But this was clearly built for maximum density, not maximum character. It does not match the area at all. And I think it's going to be two box-like promontories that are going to interfere with everyone's view, the aesthetics of which I'm simply not seeing. I think that while the builders have met all of the numerical requirements, when it comes to matching the character of the neighborhood, I see no evidence of that at all, and there should be at least some. So, my feeling would be not to worry so much about the height, but to say the height is probably gonna come down if you were only to put a little effort into matching the character of the neighborhood. This is my concern. And my feeling right now is, I would like to send this back to the planning commission with recommendation that the architecture itself be reviewed. That's all I'm considering right now.
Thank you, Julian. I also want to just point out to trustees that we do have our town attorney on the line. So if you have any questions with regards to what kind of the nature of the restriction we can do or what we can do with this and want to reference, she is there for, to answer any questions you might have. Trustee Baumhauer.
I'm hearing the concerns of the neighborhood in terms of height, and I feel like we've kind of knocked that one down. I'm not sure if we could put a number like so, say twenty-four on it, because a lot of that's gonna be revolved around the engineering. It depends on what they're using in their floor system. Are they using webs? Are they using two-by-ten? Are they using LVL? They're all different, and you have the height of the floor system as well, the height of the living space. I do think this building could be reduced to twenty-five feet. So in terms of the height, I think we could put a restriction that it must be reduced to the minimum height required for Boulder County Town and Netherlands living space. That would drastically reduce it. It would.
Did we lose you?
On the inside.
There we go, we lost you there for about thirty seconds.
Oh, I was talking about when we look at reducing the height, we also have to realize that we're reducing living space in terms of ceiling heights, claustrophobia, so quality of living for those eventual occupants of these rentals. Now, when it comes to the character of the building, I will somewhat agree with what Julian has stated that from a building perspective, hardy is a great material. It is fire resistant, it's cheap, and it's easy to install and it's pretty durable. That said, one of the main reasons hardy board is used is for fire restrictions, and I do not believe actually in that section, we have necessarily those requirements. It is also a fairly wet area.
We lost you again, Jonathan. All right. He should be back any second. Or not. We will come back to Jonathan when he reconnects, we get his audio back. Eric, you were just speaking, so we'll go to you next.
Yeah, you lost me again.
We, we lost you there for almost a minute, over a minute.
Wow, my connect, I would just say I would agree that there could be more effort put toward matching the community and matching the exterior space, maybe a reconsideration of the hardy board siding, which would really make it look like it's from Broomfield.
Eric.
Hi, yeah, sorry. I agree with, with Julian and also with the idea of reconsidering maybe the siding, but also the overall out of place to make any claims that it actually fits in with the surrounding area. I think it very clearly does not. In fact, I mean, I do think that it's quite hideous, the designs that we've been presented here. And I'm not keen on having to drive, drive by those properties, honestly. But I also don't think that, you know, as the design document, it doesn't apply to that region. I understand that that's not quite what we're legislating on here, or at least judging here. I would say that I think that the project is also in flagrant disregard of our comprehensive plan. I don't think it achieves any of the things that our comprehensive plan sets out for housing and growth or for sustainability and development. And I, I would send it back to the planning commission on those grounds alone. I am, I also do believe that the issue of height is, is problematic and that it should be mandated that it be reduced. I do think that, that, you know, authority does clearly exist within the code in Article Six, that that is precisely what a lot of those things are supposed to give us the power to keep control over as this town develops. And so on, on those kind of three grounds, I would send this back to the planning commission, absolutely.
Thank you, Eric. Tanya. There you go.
Okay, well, I am heartened to hear that my fellow trustees are feeling similar to how I'm feeling. I would think it would be a compromise just to put in the twenty-four, twenty-five foot ceiling or roof height limit on the building and let it just go through as it is for all the reasons mentioned. I mean, you know, I don't know as we set forward, what kind of precedent we want to set. Are we incurring density over the quality of life that we have for our residents? And once you put one of these in, next thing you know, Smurf Village will tear down and they'll do the same thing. I, I feel like these developers have chosen the least expensive design and materials they could do to maximize the profit. And I don't think that we necessarily as a town should encourage that just for the sake of more housing, because as people have mentioned in the letters, once it's built, it's there forever. So I, I would love to send this back to planning commission. I would love to set a precedent to encourage sustainability design aspects in a building using the sun and, and creating something that not only houses people, but creates a place where they can live, that it feels good. And to me, just, I know it's just a drawing that they. And to me, just I know it's just a drawing that they have, but it just doesn't feel good. So I would send it back and that's what I would prefer because just to vote it through with lowering the roof to 24 feet, that, that would seem like a compromise. I mean, I'd be willing to do it if that's what we all concur that is best. But it sounds like a couple of people want to go back to planning and I'm into that.
All right. Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee apt.
I concur with my fellow DOT members and input we received from the public. I think that the developers are well intentioned and they've done some, some interesting things. But overall, I think if you look at tungsten village, it's a lot more interesting and aesthetically pleasing and in terms of architecture and fits in much better with the surroundings. And I do think that the, the height should be restricted to no more than 25 feet. I'd ask the developers to try to go for 24. But I have to agree with trustee Kumsishmail that we don't see a lot of effort to be sustainable other than in a few ways, like the windows, for example. And I think there's some opportunities being missed in terms of energy efficiency and sustainability as well. So I think, I don't think it's quite ready to go.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Danforth.
Yes, I, I agree with what Ben said about the height. I think there should be a little more effort put in, I think, to reduce the height. Also, I think in terms of the design, most of the buildings in Netherland have varied sides to them as they've been added on over the years. And there's windows here and, and additions there. And I think that's what makes each house unique in Netherland to have character to them. And so on the north side of the, the building that we're looking at here, it's just a big blank wall and we don't really have any buildings in Netherland that have giant, just blank plain walls. And I think that would make it very much feel like a boxed development that you would see in, in Broomfield. So I'd like to see something, something done to add some interest, I think, to, to the blank wall. And I think everybody, since everybody's concerned about the height, I think that doing a view shed analysis will either be able to confirm that views are blocked or be able to put some people at ease to tell them, you know, we've brought the roof down to 24 and here's exactly what it's going to block or not block. I just think it would, it would be a good way to calm, to calm everyone down if, if we actually had data to support what, what could be seen and what, what wouldn't be seen. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lindsay. Of course, bouncing around like this, I no longer know, want to be sure I got it right. I think that was all the members of the board of trustees. So I can go down my nice, easy list. So trying to just kind of collate the information, collate the opinions from the board of trustees that we've heard. It sounds to me that the majority of the board is in favor of returning or of not approving this final PUD as presented and asking the applicants to return to the planning commission to work on redesign, to work on different, you know, work on the height and architect conformity with the rest of the neighborhood. But I would really like to hear any opinion from our town attorney before we go any further. So I know Jennifer is on here. Jennifer Madsen, do you have?
Yes, I, I just want to clarify, and I think mayor, you, you might have have been referring to what I was going to say, and that is that in processing this application, so what, what we're looking at here is a final application for a planned unit development. And so under section 16 dash 157 of the code, where we are in the process is that subsection E says, within 60 days of receipt of the planning commission recommendation, the board of trustees shall approve the application with or without conditions or deny the application. So there is, there's no option to refer it back to the planning commission. I think that the applicants could agree. If they agreed to go back to the planning commission and make some changes, that would be acceptable. But if, if you, really the ways to go are either approving with or without conditions or denying, there is no referral option unless the applicants will agree to do that.
And if we were to deny and say that, you know, denying it would then mean that they would have to reapply entirely and start the process again. Does that mean they would have to pay the, the fees, et cetera, all over again as well?
Um, I don't know that the code is specific on that, you know, maybe there's something that could be worked out because I'm sure a lot of the effort has, you know, town staff time. I don't know how much town staff would, would need to work on a, on a revised application.
So that there's some flexibility there potentially.
And, and you know, if, if you as a board want to revise the fees, I think it would be good to get an opinion from Cynthia as to what her thoughts are on a fee for a revised application. But you could implement a different fee tonight, say that the applicant doesn't have to pay the full fee.
Okay.
This is Cynthia. Is it, is it possible for the board of trustees to continue the application before them at the board level for applicants to come back with more information as they did at the planning commission?
Absolutely, yeah. But that would be another option is that we could continue the consideration of this item to a, to a date certain. So that if you asked the applicant to provide additional information and they agreed to provide it, then you could consider that at a future meeting.
I see some.
Sorry. In line with that, it would be my understanding that, that they couldn't change significant content to what they've proposed, given that the planning commission made a recommendation based on what they saw. So if the content wasn't greatly changed, they could shift a few things or more, add more information if that was a desire of the board. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, it, we did have a planning commission recommendation that was made. And so the review tonight is based on that recommendation.
Thank you.
The planning commission recommendations are non-binding. So if there are, even if there were changes at this point based on board of trustees input, that would be allowable.
That's, yeah, I mean, the board of trustees can implement additional conditions. Yes.
So we could just, and I'm just hypothetically here for, just to keep sort of an idea. We could continue this meeting or continue this planned unit development hearing for, meeting for, or item. Excuse me, I want to not use the word hearing, item for one month and ask the developers to come back with a view shed analysis, a analysis of if they can drop it to 24 feet and further details on potential architectural changes to the, to the buildings to better fit into the neighborhood. Just to throw ideas, those are things we could ask for, correct?
Yes, you could ask for that.
Okay.
This is trustee Taylor and thank you very much, Jennifer, for straightening me out on that. What we're asking for, I think, will require review by actual skilled engineers. And so I felt very uncomfortable with the idea of saying, yes, you're approved with the following requirements because I'm not an architectural engineer. But the idea of requiring specifically what you requested, Mayor Larson, and then continuing this for next, until next month makes very good sense to me.
Other trustees?
Trustee Kumsishmail, I, I, I hear what you're sailing, saying trustee Taylor, but my concerns are that the issues are far too great with this proposal to be resolved in a month. And my concern is that we end up drawing out a conversation based on what I believe is essentially a proposal that is wrong-handed, wrong-headed from the beginning in terms of its outset and it kind of needs to be redone. And in that, in that sense, I would say denial seems the only course of action. But I would be, of course, willing to potentially waive any reapplication fees.
I wonder if we couldn't satisfy both requirements by doing a continuation and seeing if we can get back a decent answer in some specific amount of time. Perhaps not a month, perhaps two months, who knows? And then after that, we still have the option of denying.
That, if, if the timeframe, if we can make, extend that timeframe such that a proper, you know, kind of redo of this proposal was done, I would be fine with that.
Yeah, as I was suggesting earlier, this, these architectures were built from a standard box of Lego blocks. There was nothing creative involved in this development. And for this particular neighborhood, some creativity, I think, is required. And I think we would like to see the kind of creativity that would allow a new building to blend in with the surroundings. One excellent example is a building that is near knotted root that does not show up in the aerial photographs, which were taken a very long time ago, but does show up in the ground photographs. It's a lovely building, brand new building, and yet precisely matches the surrounding area. So it's possible, I would like to see it on this plot of land.
I could not be more in agreement with what trustee Taylor just said.
Other trustees?
I just want to hop in here when we are talking about future proofing and looking at our decisions. Now there's a, I agree on a fundamental level with both what Taylor and Eric have said. There's a balance to be made here. I feel like if we're gonna, I would vote for a continuation requiring basically an engineer to approve that they can get this to 24 feet. I think it can happen just looking at building codes. The view shed analysis would be the first time we've required a developer to do that. That's a pretty strong precedence to set right there for future developers that if you're intending on developing in a neighborhood, you have to address how it affects the neighbor's views. When it comes to requiring character in architectural designs, you then get into requiring developers to pay extra for architecture. Now that is on one thing, the benefit of town, a good thing for the character of town, but that cost is always going to be transferred somewhere. So then you have to look down the line in terms of the developer recouping their costs for development. Where does that cost go? It goes to the occupants. So the argument that we must have character in our architecture might actually create the unintended consequence of creating less affordable housing because those developers have to pass on that cost for the architecture for the basically aesthetics of the property onto those occupants. When we drop the height, we also drop the living space of those ceilings for those occupants. So we're requiring the developers to do these things, but we are in effect reducing the, the standard of living and the quality of living for the eventual occupants. We know this is a rental property. So I can agree with the sentiments that maybe this doesn't match the character, but I adamantly disagree that it doesn't, isn't consistent with the comprehensive plan. It might not be consistent with the preserving open space part of the comprehensive plan, but it is sure in line with the preserve or with the infill part of the comprehensive plan. If we're seeking to get housing and we want to reduce this to one story, well, then it becomes two rental units. We have four rental units at two stories. And yes, it's very box shaped. That's so that they can fit these three bedrooms in there. There are potential things they can do with the footprint, reduce to two bedrooms and then get some architectural in there. They can put on awnings, things like that to create architecture features. But in reality, it's really going to come down to the siding they use and the siding details and the window trim that they can match the existing. I am not in favor of voting this down. I am definitely in favor of asking for a view shed analysis and engineering plans that show that we can address the concern in terms of preserving heights. I think what we've heard from the surrounding neighborhood is these are well-intentioned folks that have done their best in these circumstances to meet code by the letter of the law. I agree, it is our job to decide whether or not this fits with the rest of town. We have to consider multiple things here, I believe, that one tungsten village might have some cute architecture, but it doesn't fit with the rest of town. We do have a lack of housing stock and this is actually straight up infill as our comprehensive plan calls for. So I would just like to see us vote for a continuance. I would be very, very disappointed to vote this down and kind of almost turn away all the good faith and good work on the part of these developers. I think they're willing to work.
Just to respond very quickly, sorry, Tanya, just to respond very quickly to that. I, I want to make it very clear that my concerns regarding kind of nothing to do with architectural style, but rather that the comprehensive plan calls for infill in the context of sustainability and affordability, which these units make no effort towards. And so in that sense, it is in disrepute of the comprehensive plan.
One aspect of it, I will give you that.
Yep, I was going to say something very similar and I was also going to add that these are not intended to be affordable units. They're intended to be market rate units. So any little extra expense that they may incur on design, it is, will get passed on to the consumer at market rates. And I think if you drive around town and see a lot of the new construction that's been happening that I also don't love, they are not going for cheap. So even, even though people are not using creativity or using architecture in the current development of the town of Netherland, they're still going for market rates, not cheap. So it certainly wouldn't hurt to start a precedence of some design aspects. And I don't necessarily mean, when I say design, I'm, I'm talking about quality of life. Ultimately, a well-designed space is going to enhance the longevity of a unit and it's going to increase its desirability so that people will want to stay there. And I'm talking about the outdoor space utilizing terraces and things of that nature that just take a little more creativity and cost a little more initially in the construction, ultimately make it a more desirable place. But this is not an affordable housing unit, so let's not even go there. I mean, it's built like it's one and it's, it's being designed like it's one. And we don't have to let it in just because it's creating four more units for housing. Let's, let's focus on the quality of life of the people that are here already. That, that's my opinion, but we differ, I'm sure.
Thank you, Tanya. Other trustees? Alan, Lindsay?
Yeah, I like the idea of the continuation with, you know, conditions that we're, we're anticipating seeing some improvements with the height. And I realize this, you know, architecture, this architectural design is subjective. You know, it's, it really is. But, and you know, you could say that, I understand what Jonathan's saying when he says that tungsten village doesn't really fit in. But you know, they did a lot with just some different color patterns. And you know, I lived in Fort Collins for 30 years and as I was leaving, you know, there's this, this type of architecture called Bauhaus, which basically is German for box. It's boxes and that's what went up all over Fort Collins and it really, I think, in my opinion, destroyed the character of a lot of the town. It's, you know, just cookie cutter kind of stuff. just cookie cutter kind of stuff. So I do think we can do better and I, you know, I think it's some other, some other project to some other date. I mean, not a project, but it's a general idea. I'm going to propose that we look at solar orientation as something that we consider carefully or maybe have a standard for future development. It's too late for this because they didn't come in without as a, as a requirement. But it makes a huge difference in terms of energy efficiency and comfort for the residents. But bottom line is let's continue it, let's see if we can get some improvements and go from there. That'd be my suggestion.
To trustee Taylor, trustee apt, I think the word you're looking for is not Bauhaus, but brutalist. So I think if we can come back with an architecture that is not a brutalist architecture, I think we're going to be getting much closer to something that's entirely acceptable for that neighborhood. So I understand this is a very loosey goosey thing, the character, but I think there is such a stark contrast that it is worthy to bring it up.
Trying to talk about, yeah, I don't want to say, you know, legislating architecture always reminds me of that situation a few years ago where Prince Charles basically came out saying nothing modern should ever be built. And by his definition of modern, I think it was anything after the, you know, turn of the 19, you know. You know, the things we might not appreciate now. But yeah, I do think there are some things.
I completely agree. That's why I'm saying I think this is so stark.
Any further input trustee Danforth?
Sorry, everybody was jumping around there. Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with asking for some of these improvements and continuing this either to our next meeting or the meeting after that to give them time to, to address the height issue and potentially have some improvements on architecture to, to give it a little bit of the quirkiness, I think, that's typical of Netherlands.
I'm looking at our master agenda for the next few months. And the next meeting in October, early October is when we are presented, or we are presenting to the town, the 2021 budget, sort of the highlight of that night. So my proposal will be that we continue this discussion or continue this application until the October 20th meeting, so just over a month from now. And what I would like to do is I think we would need to be able to provide to our applicants some very clear direction in terms of the concerns. I mean, we've, we've had a lot of concerns thrown around in a lot of different areas, but we need to be able to provide to them some clear direction on what we would like to see addressed by the October 20th meeting. The height of the building, getting that to a minimum height is obviously one of those. Perhaps the architectural character of some nature or something is another one of those that we've heard to significant amount. I'm trying to think, I'm looking at you trustee Combs Ismail right now. I'm trying to figure out how to summarize what you did in terms of a clear direction. So you can help me out here if you have a clear direction on some of the things you were looking for.
I would like to see in addition to what you just said, clear efforts made towards addressing the Netherlands Comprehensive Plans mandate to develop affordably and sustainably. And sustainability doesn't mean economically sustainable, it means environmentally sustainable. And affordability doesn't mean in accordance with any kind of affordable housing program or making any of those thresholds, but that there is some effort towards sustainability and affordability.
Okay.
Can I toss one thing in here?
Yeah, please.
I think the clear direction we're looking for is I would actually agree with Lindsay that I think we, it is within our right to require a view shed analysis. This issue of views comes up with not only developments, but this has come up with park developments that town of Netherlands has looked at that. I'll say I was one who completely didn't even comprehend that, oh, we could be stealing the view of Barker from Second Street residents. So this issue of views has become pretty prominent in the town of Netherlands. When we look at development, our comprehensive plan asks for infill. If you're going to infill, you're going to be blocking people's views who have one story houses. So I think it's a good precedence to require a view shed analysis on this development. It will signal to future developer, to developers, the type of issues that they want to get ahead of on the, you know, upriver essentially before they get to this process. I think we can require an architect, architectural plant, height, maximum peak can be only 24 inches. It's a little bit more money on the developer's part, but those are two things we can require. I think we should ask for a good faith effort on the part of architecture. I'm with you that I would very much disagree with legislating architecture. When we look at this building, we're thinking it's a box. But from a building perspective, a box is actually the most sustainable. You got four corners, you got straight walls, it's really easy to seal up, it's really easy to insulate and it's really easy to heat. When you start adding on these additions, all these little character things that we have in town, because it's an old mounting town with additions, those things, then you get into air seal problems, you get into unique framing issues, you get into over framing. The cost goes up, not necessarily in the design, the cost goes up in the project management and in the building aspect. That cost will still be passed on to the occupant. It is a rental property. So how the developer builds and the amount of money they spend actually does affect the eventual market rate of that property. As we had a public comment from Chris Marcio, we can't legislate what people can rent their homes for. That's what the market currently does. So I believe we're in all in agreement that we don't like the architecture here. I think the best we can do is ask for a good show of faith to add some gable windows, add a, you know, a bump out here or there on some of those lower windows so that it has a little space, has some character, isn't just this blank wall. Maybe look at, you haven't used all the footprint available. So there could be a deck or two put on in specific places added. And so long as it was in line with the rest of the Feng Shui. I wouldn't like to see that legislated, but I think we can ask for some good faith on the part of the developers. I would like for us to move forward with a continuation requiring a view shed analysis and architectural plans that show the height can be kept to 24 feet. And I'll make that a motion right now.
Just to be clear, are you saying, are you making a motion to continue to the October 20th meeting?
Correct, with the requirement of a view shed analysis and architectural plans to show the height can be kept to 24, 25 feet maximum.
And good faith?
Good faith is on the architectural plans to add some character to it. In reality, I would suggest put a belly band on that hardy painted a different color, add wainscoting on the bottom and maybe consider doing the upper part in vertical ship lap siding. All of that put into rendering would actually very much match a lot of what Wendy Williams has. And if you have a few gable windows and you have a few bay windows on the lower story, that will add some bump outs, take the box look out of the whole building and none of those things should really affect your footprint in terms of what the planning commission approved.
This is trustee Taylor and I'm only speaking up because I actually made the list and I'm agreeing with trustee Baumhofer that that is the list. Three things, view shed analysis, assurance of 24 foot height and a best faith analysis, a best, a good faith effort to provide some kind of character to the architecture. And I also agree with trustee Baumhofer that this should not be a matter of legislation, but in a case like this where we're seeing such a stark difference, I think it's entirely reasonable to request that good faith effort.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for just a second, we have a motion on the table, I'll get to, I know you wanted to say something here, just give me a half a second. Motion from trustee Taylor, or sorry trustee Baumhofer, it sounded like a second from trustee Taylor.
I will second it.
I believe we might have a motion to amend.
I do have a motion to amend. And that is to, a requirement to address concerns of environmental sustainability and economic affordability.
I will accept that friendly amendment.
That's a friendly amendment. Very good. So we have a motion with the now four criteria, four directions to the applicants and a second for a continuation of this until October 20th. Miranda, would you please call the vote?
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously and we will have this on our agenda again in little over a month. I want to just close this out by again thanking the applicants. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for working with us. I really look forward to seeing what comes back to us in a month. And I also want to thank the, all the members of the public who've come out and listened to us and provided input both and via email over the last week or so. So thank you all very much and we will be doing this again in a month. But right now we are moving on to the second code based thing of the night, an SRU. We're getting all of it, PUDs and SRUs in one night. I feel like I'm back on the planning commission. SRU is for Mandala Integrative Veterinary Care LLC. I believe we're back to Cynthia for introductions.
Mayor, is it possible to take a short break? We've been two hours and 40 minutes into this application. I would love to take a break really quick before we jump in.
Let, let's take a break till 9:45 PM.
This is trustee Taylor. I was going to say this meeting hasn't only been two hours long, it's been an hour and a half wide.
Stop wasting my break time trustee Taylor.
All right, we got one minute left here on the break. I should like have that little ringing thing that they have at the theater. Make sure everyone gets back in time. All right, well by my clock it is now 9:45. Before we tackle this SRU, based on trustee Taylor's calculation or assessment of this meeting being an hour and a half wide, that means thus far we've been at this meeting for hours, which I'm not real clear on, but we are also only 15 minutes from our 10 o'clock hour. So instead of interrupting the middle of this RS, are you? I'd like to ask there to be a motion to extend the meeting till 10:30.
I saw motion, this is Taylor.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second from trustee Coombs Ismail, Miranda.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes. That was Jonathan.
That was Jonathan, my apologies.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer. Trustee Corvallin.
I'm sorry, I was not here, what are we voting on?
Extending the meeting.
Extending the meeting to 10:30.
Oh, yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes. All right, thank you, I just didn't want to interrupt the potentially the presentations with that in about 15 minutes. So please introduce the SRU.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you board. Before you is a special review use SRU application. It's related to an animal hospital and integrative veterinary and medicine practice. At the aim at the top, it says 98 South First Street, pardon me, it's actually 98 West First Street. The rest of the aim does say west. So it's on West First Street, it's in the existing real estate building that has been there. The applicant, Dr. Kelly Keeney, she's under contract to purchase property in which she proposes to have her practice. The building is located in the central business district, CBD, and the proposed veterinary use falls under the commercial uses, which includes, includes but is not limited to animal hospitals, enclosed kennels, car washes, cleaning and laundry plants, cold storage lockers, building materials, equipment dealers, wholesaling services and construction trades. It's kind of a mishmash of one, but it's certainly called out specifically as animal hospitals. We've seen this use before in town, although from Kelly Keeney, and she can speak to that, she has a different way to go about the use that's more integrative than a standard animal hospital. The application does note that the approachment issue of the building, which she's with her attorney on, and there is also limited to no parking on the property due to the, the property itself. So they did purchase spaces, paid for spaces into the commercial parking fund as a, in lieu of providing those parking spaces. Application is a, a 800 square foot building that's existing. They would be using the current building, they may, they would be bringing that up to code in the building aspect, whatever code requirements for ADA and other things that they would need to do. But otherwise they're not proposing to make any major changes to the building as it stands, as it exists right now. There was a lot in the property file that I went into about the history and previous commission action. It was really more about the history of the building and, and different aspects, but it's not necessarily pertinent to the application before you. It was really more about the history of the building and, and different aspects, but it's not necessarily pertinent to the application before you. The, there were not too many staff concerns that mainly concerned the sidewalk project across the street, the tip project, just noting the, the parking encroachment issues there. I don't think I have anything else to add to this. I didn't really receive public comment in opposition of this application. So other than that, if there are any questions of me, I hope to be able to answer them.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Sure.
Do any trustees have questions for Cynthia or town staff regarding this proposal? This is kind of questions on the presentation before we hear from the, do it the same way as last one. Presentation before we hear from the applicant themselves.
This is Trustee Taylor. Cynthia, this is admittedly a very weird blue building and it's in a spot. And that's, that's part of this, that's part of what makes this Netherlands, so I'm not too worried about it. But I am wondering, is there some kind of is there some kind of precedent that makes the transfer of an old quirky building some kind of a special opportunity to say that building can't be used? I don't think there is. I'm just wondering, is there, is there a precedent of any kind that says, you know, the fact that somebody built this so long ago that we even had zoning and now someone else wants to use it? Is grandfathering something like this in the most common way to do it? Or is there some kind of a precedent for saying, oh, no, this building must be destroyed? I mean, what's, what's, what's the way we think about that?
You ask a really good question. So, I mean, with respect to what this constitutes on a building level, any brick and mortar in the town is either going to be a change of occupancy or a change of use. So either someone else is coming in and doing the same type of use, or they're altering that use type, which is going to affect the building, trigger the building code and the fire code with different aspects. So technically, when I say there would be aspects brought up to current code, that is what would drive it, is that it's a change of use. Another level, when you get into, so for example, the fact that the building where it is built on the property as it was built in 1950, 30, you know, almost 30 years before we had a zoning code, building were burned down, we would probably expect that they would build their building in the right footprint of the property and wouldn't continue to encroach. And that's a reasonable thing. I've talked with the applicant about as we've discussed this application moving through with respect to encroachment issues, the encroachment of the building itself, deck itself. And so I would say that with respect to adding in addition, say, where the code says that if, if something is non, I mean, you can't exacerbate non-conformance. So if one area doesn't meet a stack, you can't propose to further push that setback. So, so in respect of to that, when I would look on a building and okay, the front of this building, you know, facing to the north is already encroaching in our property, but the back of the building that isn't encroaching, you know, you could work with that. Or you could design in a way that, that you could, you know, if you added a second level, you couldn't encroach, you couldn't further encroach, but you could, you know, back it off. And I think Kelly Keeney is aware of that as we've discussed it. But in general, I don't think there's anything in the code that stipulates, no, you can't use this, this building. I think it's really, how creative can you get?
Yeah, and, and that makes sense. I mean, we're, everybody's used to the building. Lord knows, everyone knows it's there already. Whatever problems it's going to cause, it's already causing. And so grandfathering it in seems entirely reasonable to me as well. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't something weird.
Reasonable question.
Thank you, Julian.
I have a question. Are we grandfathering it? I was under the impression that a revocable encroachment form allows town to at any point ask the owner to tear out the area that's approaching. I'm a little confused now because I thought we were not grandfathering it by signing, having them sign a revocable encroachment. It means at any moment they could be asked to tear it down or move it.
I, I think that that, yes, I mean, when you say something is, is revocable, you, it would be on an end of, we recognize that if this burned down, you would, would not be building in the same footprint as existing now. It, it does have that, it does have that leverage for the town to say, hey, you know, if we need to expand our road, that is, that's part of that, you know, ability that it could be revoked. Although I don't think, I don't think generally Netherlands has a tone where we say unbuilt your building. Otherwise, you could look at the south side of First Street and you would ask Crosscut, The Deli, Rustic Moose, you know, all the way down to even Bucy Brews. Bucy Brews, when it was built as Wild Mountain in 2010, 11, maybe they finished it in 2012, that was actually lead into the road. So all those other buildings are more historic. But you even look at The Deli and that's hardscaped garden further into the town road. So I mean, I don't think the town really has a robust attitude of takings. I don't think that would go over very well in the town. But I haven't seen in the seven years that I've worked for the town, the town actually do takings. So with respect to land use law, we haven't, we haven't pushed that. We understand throughout the town, there are encroachments all over the town. We like get people aware of it in a sense of, we know, you know, and now you, we know that you, you know, you're encroaching on our town, but it exists all over the place in the town. And it's an awareness piece, and when we can get them to have that encroachment, it protects the town as much as the applicant. In a sense, it keeps, it keeps an applicant from saying, okay, great, well now I'm going to add 10 more feet. And it allows an applicant a little bit safe in the sense of, okay, we're acknowledging this. But I can understand it. Kelly Keeney certainly had some concerns about that. What does that mean for me? Are you going to ask me to unbuild my building?
I think this might be a really good opportunity to turn to the town attorney. Because I believe she might be able to, Jennifer might be able to better explain the idea of revocable, irrevocable and with regards to these properties and others in town. So Jennifer?
Yes, I'm happy to speak on this. As Cynthia mentioned, there are several properties in the town that do encroach on the right of way. And as I understand, as these, these properties come before the Board of Trustees and the planning commissions for different applications, special review uses, at those times, we've been asking that the applicant agree as a condition of approval, that the applicant agree to an approach, encroachment agreement, which specifies the rights of the different parties. The applicant property owner is encroaching on to the town right of way. Part of the agreement talks about who has the liability for accidents or incidents that relate to the property that is on the town's, to the, to the property owner's property that is encroaching on the right of way. And so it just specifies legal rights for the different parties. All of the agreements that I'm aware of that the town has entered into with property owners in the past, I'm aware of two, Crosscut and Bucy Brews, and those two have both been revocable encroachment agreements. And in the agreement, in those agreements, there, the revocation follows a process. There's a public hearing and at that public hearing, the town board must make a legislative determination that removal of the improvements is necessary to protect the public health, safety or welfare. So although there, you know, we might not be able to think of an incident right now where we would ask for removal of this private property, it's possible that at some point in the future, there may be an instance where maybe the stairs or other portion of the building would need to be removed. But again, that would be after a hearing and there would need to be a determination that it was necessary for public health and safety.
Does it help clear up the question you had, Tanya?
Oh, oh yeah. And I'm just reading here that the applicant is requesting a non-revocable agreement. So that's something that we can vote on tonight?
That's going to be one of the items, Gus, yeah.
Okay. And, and just, just to say, and as far as a non-revocable agreement, those aren't traditionally done with, with town right of way. Town right of way is held in public trust. If it's not revocable, then that right of way is not for the public trust anymore. Essentially, the property owner then has greater rights than the public trust. But that is definitely something that you could decide as a board, that you would agree to for this application.
Okay.
I had a question, Jennifer, following up on that, if that's all right. And that is, in the agreement itself, it reads public health, safety or welfare. And I just wanted to be clear on whether something like the tip project, for instance, like if we were to determine that there was such a project that would be more directly affected, and I guess this is then a question for, for Cynthia, is whether or not this will affect the tip project at all. But let's say that there was a project such like that where we get a large grant and we want to, you know, significantly change the character of the area, would that fall under this rubric of public health D or welfare? Would we be able to revoke the encroachment issue based on a project like that?
You would need to have a hearing. You would need to hear evidence as to, you know, what, what is the information on in favor of the revocation, the property owner would be able to attend the hearing. And so, I mean, I can't say what the outcome, final outcome of that would be.
Sure.
Certainly, you know, that would be something that could be brought before the Board of Trustees, yes.
And then that question of the tip project and whether or not this would negatively affect the tip project.
And I think that's for Cynthia, right?
Yeah, whoever can answer, I guess.
And Chris Palatier is on as well. So I know the trip to Tips project in terms of the build, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, is on the other side of the street on the Catman Do side, but maybe Chris can speak to that a little more.
No, it wouldn't affect this project.
Great, just that confirmation. That's question, sorry, now that I'm on. And that, sorry, I just took over. The back of the building, I just wonder why there can't be parking there? The back of the building.
So that was given to the applicant as an option to remove the shed and come up with some creative parking on their lot. The commercial parking fund is an option to them and they did opt to go that route. Really with the, the removal of that shed and adding in that parking, they would have to return back to the planning commission to have that site plan approved and reviewed by them.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be clear on, on why that wasn't taken up. But I'm, I think, I think personally, I'm actually more in favor of not adding parking and maintaining as much of that zone, that riparian zone next to the creek as we possibly can, so.
Any other trustees have questions for town staff? I'm just going to have you guys speak up here instead of go down the list, so feel free to.
I got one question for Jennifer, which would be if we have irrevocable, basically, we're waiting our right of way, or would you as our town attorney, attorney suggest that we move away from that precedence toward writing revocable? That makes sense.
It, it does. And I, I've been involved in one of these agreements in the past that was for Bucy Brews, and that was a revocable encroachment license. And then also where that Crosscut was a revocable encroachment license. So the ones that we've had in the past have been, that I'm aware of, have been revocable. So if we went to an irrevocable agreement, that would be moving away from what, what has been established as the practice in the past.
This is a question from Trustee Taylor to anybody who can answer. Were we to insist upon our traditional revocable contract, would that be a deal breaker that would make the rest of this work irrelevant? Or would that be something that you think we could easily negotiate with Dr. Keeney?
I believe the applicant is here, so I think she could answer that question.
Then let me ask the question, I'm terribly sorry, I don't have the name in front of me. Is it Dr. Keeney?
Yes, Kelly Keeney.
Keeney, thank you very much. Would you be amenable to the more traditional revocable contract?
Strongly, strongly advised by my attorney not to enter into this with a revocable encroachment agreement. So sadly, no, that would be a deal breaker.
Okay, so you understand that that is a change of precedent and that is something that the board would have to take very seriously?
Yes, definitely.
Very fine.
Well, Dr. Keeney, as we have you off of mute here, if you'd like to introduce yourself and give us a little idea about the project here, I think that would be a great next step for this evening.
Sure, yeah, I'm Kelly Keeney. I live just outside of Ned on Sugarloaf. And I have a integrative veterinary practice that I'm looking to expand into a brick and mortar space. And we have known about this building. I've known Mary Ann for a long time and I've always thought it was such a sweet spot. So that's kind of how we entered into this negotiation of, of my potentially buying, buying her building for that space. So my practice is, I don't do surgery and I have a much lower flow of clients. I spend a lot longer with my patients. I do a lot of acupuncture and herbal therapies and things like that. So it's, it's definitely a different vibe than a traditional veterinary practice. Yeah, so that's just kind of has been our vision, moving forward, just expanding into a, a nice space in town.
Well, thank you and welcome. Does, do any trustees have questions for Dr. Keeney?
I, I don't have a question for the doctor, but I do have a question about a possible option for a revocable, non-revocable permit on the encroachment, if it's also non-transferable? So it'd only be for this business? Is that possible to do that?
I'm afraid that, that part of the issue comes with ever wanting to sell this building in the future and that's the bigger concern, although after hearing some of the other things tonight, I, I think it's a real concern to have a non-revocable agreement, even just with some of the discussions so far. Because it does sound like, like that isn't too far out of the scope of possible to, to kind of be asked to move your building or a part of your building, which would be an expense we wouldn't be able to absorb. But I think in the resale of the building, that's the concern from my attorney. Even if we were willing to accept the risk on our behalf, it would be harder to sell it down the road.
Does the current building have a revocable encroachment on it?
I don't think so. I don't know, actually. I don't think so. I don't know, actually.
Cynthia?
Not to my knowledge. I I, you know, there would have been an opportunity to have a variance. I mean, it, you know, a variance could be applied to the property and achieve the spirit of what she's trying to achieve with a revocable permit. By creating a covenant that runs with the property, I mean, in essence, acknowledging that it's encroaching, but it's a little bit of a different issue. I mean, it, you know, it would it would note that it's not meeting setbacks and things, but it would it would add to that. I don't know of any, I don't know of any non-revocable permits in the town.
Well, just it's weird that when Mary Ann bought the building from Indian Peaks Trading, that they, you guys didn't put the same revocable, I think I'm pronouncing it wrong, but the revocable encroachment on that, you know, 10 years ago or whenever that was, 20 years ago. Why now?
Are you asking staff or are you asking? I think I think it's Kelly and her attorney who are wanting that for her own assuredness.
I guess my question is, why, why now are you guys wanting the revocable?
If you look it up, it's revocable.
Revocable.
I'm a word, I'm a word person. You guys can pronounce it how you want. I think we all know what we're talking about.
I just want to say it right. Revocable encroachment. What I'm saying is, how come in the past two or three owners, they didn't have to do it? Why is she being asked to do it?
Mary's, Mary Ann Rodak has owned it since 1998.
Yeah, before it was that, it was that Indian Peaks Trading.
Yeah, and I, and you probably remember that. You know, as I, as I noted earlier, there are encroachments all throughout the town. And I and I don't know that the town has robustly addressed that. I think when survey work was done for Crosscut, that's when Lee Stilwell noted that they were encroaching into the town road. And and we addressed that through the encroachment agreement. And as I said, it's a it's a joint way to protect both parties, for them not to further encroach, so we can hold them to where it's at and so that they can understand that that we know about that. But obviously, it's that's a ten, a piece of tenuousness for Kelly with respect to that property. But I think we have, as town staff, tried to address this more rather than just kind of turning away, knowing that it's encroaching, making a more formal agreement with that and recognizing that in a more formal way. And so we've been trying to address this as it comes up in town. In some cases, we reached out to, say, properties on the south side of First Street, noting that encroachment and asking them to come forward. But in other parts of town where people are encroaching, I I don't know how, you know, robust that has been in in reaching out with folks. But certainly, when applications come forward, it's a good opportunity to address those at Bucy Brews and others. Does that answer your question, Tanya?
So this variance you were saying, explain that a little more.
Well, I mean, I think I kind of misspoke a little bit. In some senses, if someone doesn't meet a setback for a district, and let's acknowledge the zoning was established. It's a boilerplate zoning code seen throughout Colorado. And and then Nederland has tweaked it to its own needs over time, adopted in 81. And we have buildings that have existed, you know, late 1800s and 1900s. And so I think overall, the spirit of it is met throughout the town. But there are certainly properties that are interesting shapes. And, you know, things that were built into a road that was probably a lot more narrow 50 years ago or what have you. And so with respect to variance on a property, if they don't meet certain aspects like setbacks and things like that, and that's less of an encroachment and more of, say, if you had a, say, 20-foot front setback and you were, you know, only 12 feet, you know, you only had 12, you could request a variance for those eight feet in order to have that run like a covenant with the property to note that and record that sort of non-compliance with the zoning code so that it wouldn't affect someone in the future? I don't know, and I think Jennifer would be a good, that'd be a good question for Jennifer. If if you could meet that spirit of encroachment through a variance, I'm not entirely sure. It's usually if they fall short of zoning code, not if they're actually pushing into it. But that may be a good question for her.
And I, yeah, this is trustee Taylor, Cynthia, because I was thinking exactly the same thing. This is a question for Jennifer, and let me see if I can frame that question. Jennifer, functionally, what would be the difference between an irrevocable encroachment agreement, which would be unusual for us, or a variance, which would not be that unusual? Functionally, what would be the difference?
The this this situation actually wouldn't fit into a variance application because what what is happening is the the property, the structure, is on the town's property. And so what that means is, you know, just as if your neighbor were to build a structure on your property, you would have the right to remove that structure. So even though we don't, that's not something that has been done in the past. Right now, in terms of property ownership and encroachment, that would be the town's right for structures that are on the town's property. And this is, the variance process is used for setbacks, for building heights, other yard and bulk requirements.
So Jennifer, for an irrevocable encroachment agreement, is that equivalent to the town ceding their property to this owner?
Not necessarily. I mean, one thing we could do that would be an option is we could vacate the right of way and give the right of way to to that property owner. So then the property owner would actually have ownership interest in the land underneath the building. But what it means is that they have, the property owner has a right, a property ownership interest in occupying the space on the town's right of way. Does that, that make sense?
So so the town still owns the land, but in perpetuity, this particular property owner has the right to encroach upon that land?
Well, and what I have discussed with the applicant's attorney, and I I spoke with him briefly on the phone, is that he, he would be agreeable, and I'm assuming the applicant would follow his advice, but he would be agreeable to an agreement which specified that if the building were removed, demolished, changed, so that it was no longer encroaching, the agreement would be, would be removed, would be revoked. So it would be, it wouldn't be in perpetuity. It would be if there was a change to the structure so that it was no longer encroaching.
Okay, so it sounds like we're being a little overly cautious, considering that the town has never reclaimed a revocable encroachment agreement. But, okay, in this case, we make an exception. Do we have, for example, Jennifer, a well-documented explanation for why we would make this exception in this case? What makes this case unique such that an irrevocable encroachment agreement would be appropriate?
I think that you could make an argument that an irrevocable encroachment agreement would be appropriate for this particular situation, for the building, for the structure. I'm aware that Bucy Brews was more of the patio, wood patio space that was encroaching on the town right of way. That would be something that, you know, it's it's not as permanent as the structure of this building. And and you could also take it, I think there's there's two pieces, two improvements that are encroaching. One is the building and one is the wood stairs. And as I understand it, the the applicant would agree to two different agreements, one for the building, which would be irrevocable, and then one for the wood stairs, which would be revocable. And again, Ms. Keeney could address that, but that's how you could handle that situation. That would be justification for having a different type of agreement.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful, Jennifer. I, from what I'm hearing, I know that I would be amenable to the irrevocable encroachment agreement combined with the contract that you described with attorney.
Well, I think we can chew on this for a little bit. I'd like to get to public comment, and I don't want to be rushing people, but I'm just keeping an eye on the clock as well. I want to make sure we get public comment on this. So I know we have one pub, one item of public comment that town staff will be reading into the records, but I will open this up to anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this matter. Now would be your opportunity.
Would you like, go ahead?
I was gonna let, I was gonna see if anyone was speaking up here. Raising their hand or speaking up. Barring that, I will turn to you, Karen.
Sure, so this is from Kathleen Chipby, Chipby, 30-year Netherlands area resident, 17-year Netherlands business owner. She says, I think the BOT should grant an irrevocable encroachment to the property at 98 West First Street that is filed with Boulder County and attached to title. So whomever owns the building doesn't have their property value or their business crush. The encroachment is, after all, from when the building went up in 1950 and occurred based on bad surveys of and by the town. Keep in mind, recent BOTs and the Planning Commission have approved both the Smokehouse and the Apothecary with the same amount of encroachment on the same side of the street, and that all businesses on the south side of the street are in the same predicament. Also, this BOT voted to untie the hands of the Peak View subdivision non-resident owner because of previous board's poor decisions just a few weeks ago. Also, Cynthia Bakay's packet info says Ned has one vet when it has two, and she never mentioned this section of the code, Article 7, Nonconforming Uses Structures and Lots, Section 18-182. Change of nonconforming use, a nonconforming use may be changed only to a conforming use. I support the SRU, but I want the BOT to understand when it might be setting precedent or might need to fix the code is all. Her parking, I think people need to be treated fairly and as equally as possible. I think the vet clinic shouldn't have to pay $7,500 or anything for parking that encroaches onto town property because Kind Castle didn't have to pay anything for their supposed six spaces that are encroaching town property. I guess I guess there's more, just a moment. So that was, and so she quotes JAI 62020, Miranda to Kind Castle. Your six parking spaces are in the town's right of way, so we need to enter into a revocable encroachment agreement with town. The cost of the encroachment is $250. If they do get charged over encroachment parking, shouldn't it be the flat $250, the quoted Kind Castle? And I wonder why the vet clinic didn't get an email that says what the email sent Kind Castle does, quote Miranda. Given the complexity of this, and towns need to update our municipal code for parking as a whole, we will not be doing a revocable encroachment at this time. Please expect to see an arrangement in the future. Good luck with the prep this week. Let me know if you have any questions or need anything else.
Thank you, Karen. Last chance for any public input, public comment on this? If not, I will bring this back to the Board of Trustees for further discussion. Just as a reminder that our options tonight are approval as presented with, and as presented is with the revocable. Lost the word. Yep, the revocable. Yeah, revocable encroachment, thank you, Eric. We could also change that to a revocable or pass an SRU with any other conditions or to deny. So those are the options before us, or obviously, we can continue this also to a future meeting if we need further time and discussion and thought. Trustee Danforth.
Yeah, I just had a question for town staff. I I'm hesitant to do anything with an irrevocable agreement just because that's pretty much just giving people land, and I'm afraid of the precedents that that might set. And so I'm wondering if it would be possible to carve out that little chunk of land where they are currently sitting and occupying and sell that to them to make that actually part of the parcel? Is that an option?
We'll let Jennifer answer that.
Yes, that could be done as a vacation of the right of way. That's what would have to be done. So they'd have to apply for the vacation of the sidewalk and then go through that process with the town.
Do you do you think that would make more sense than having an irrevocable agreement?
I mean, I don't know, they might, they could be with an an irrevocable agreement, as I mentioned, there there would be terms where it would be revoked. So if the structure is removed, then there would be situations where it would be, it would be, it would be revoked or removed because there's no longer an encroachment. So by vacating the land, essentially, then by vacating the public right of way, the property owner would get more more land, more property. And even if they change your building, I guess, I mean, there's different, there's different benefits one way or the other. But it is two, it's two different processes, two different things. If the structure was removed, then the new owner would have to build it in a way that it would be a conforming building on the lot with setbacks as required by the code.
I wanted to make a point about Bucy Brews. This is Cynthia. The concern about Bucy Brews is that the porch that would encroach, they wanted to serve food and drinks out there. So there was concern about people drinking. And if there was liability, the fact that they would be technically on the town's land. So that was part of the driving force behind the the encroachment agreement there. And then I want to note that it it may exist in this town. Certainly, there's lots of things that I have yet to see. But I don't know that we've done a lot of right-of-way vacations in a parallel dimension. So normally, you're talking about a property and then a road, and then a property on the other side of it, and say, the neighbors have to split it. In the right-of-way vacation policy guide, it notes that it can't just benefit one entity. But it's, you know, so what you're, this is kind of an interesting question. But I do know that with tungsten village, they didn't, they originally wanted to ask for all of Tilden Street to the west of the the development for that right of way. But given that it couldn't benefit one entity through state law, they only vacated half of that road, the half that would be on their side. So I'm not really sure how it works with this particular thing and the policy for right-of-way vacations. But I just wanted to mention those few things.
That was trustee Taylor. That was trustee Taylor.
Thirty seconds trustee Taylor, please.
Go ahead, please.
All right, um, that, uh, I, I find all of this conversation, I mean, I think it's really admirable that you folks are trying to make this work uh, for, um, for the doctor, but uh, I find this very problematic that, um, I think the, the, the revocable agreement is a protection uh, for her. It is not, um, anything other than a protection. Uh, without the agreement, she is completely unprotected. And so we are extending a protection. And what she wants is more protection, uh, at the of the town. And I think that that's really problematic. And I think that the idea that, um, we couldn't revoke this agreement based on public health, safety or welfare is, uh, something that we should not be countenancing even remotely. And I think that it's, uh, really improper that she's even asking for this.
Thank you, Eric. And Julian, I'll let you here in a minute. Just, it is now ten thirty. So do I have a motion to extend the meeting to eleven?
Yeah, I will reluctantly, uh, move to extend this to eleven.
Jonathan, you got the second there?
Yep.
Miranda?
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
No.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
No.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Sorry, oh.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhover.
Yes.
Meeting is extended. Julian?
I was just going to say, I, I really understand trustee Coombs Esmales concern here. Um, a, a, and yet the, the issue is to protect the town so the town does not permanently lose their right of way. That would be a variance or a, an allowance for the applicant to purchase town property. And, uh, uh, I also somewhat understand the concern that the applicant has. It strikes me that since our tradition is a revocable encroachment agreement, that is preferable. But the irrevocable encroachment agreement combined with a contract, which Jennifer has indicated her attorney, the, the applicant's attorney is willing to accept. Wherein if the building is destroyed or dismembered in some way, we can have a new building built on the same spot. I'm feeling reasonably okay with that. Just thought I, just thought I'd put that out there.
I'm gonna follow up on that one comment there that Julian just made because I'm also very much uh, leery of an irrevocable. Uh, not only because it sets a new precedence for the town, it also then makes me question what we've done on, will we have to reassess what we've done on East First Street? Will we have those businesses coming forward and saying, hey, why don't we, we want now an irrevocable as opposed to our revocable? Uh, but my question is actually for the town attorney, if we were to go the irrevocable route with the contract, um, rider, uh, and the, a future owner of the business, say two owners down the road looks at the building and decides they want to expand the building, if they want to do sort of a remodel, but where they leave a good chunk of it, you know, say that piece that's on the irrevocable portion and then expand elsewhere. Does that count as the modification? Is this the type of thing where if, you know, I, I, we've seen the buildings where it's like, oh, we're just doing a remodel, but they just leave the one corner of a building standing and rebuild everything else around it. Is that leaving open that kind of thing?
The, the agreement could be drafted in such a way to, um, account for that situation. I mean, if, if we drafted the agreement, we could account for, say, fifty percent of the building is changed in structure, then the, the agreement is terminated. And that would have to be something that would we'd have to reach an agreement with Ms. Keeney's attorney on that and Ms. Keeney. But, but it could be drafted in such a way that if, if a significant portion of the building is changed, then that removes the, um, irrevocable encroachment license.
Okay. We've had a couple, there's a couple trustees we haven't heard from on this, uh, trustee apt, do you want to weigh in?
Well, you know, I understand the, the reservations involved here, but I, I also, uh, hate to hinder uh, a good business. And I guess I don't have the hangup on just saying if, the, you know, if, uh, veterinarian Kelly King is willing to purchase the right of way, why wouldn't we just sell it to her? Uh, obviously we don't need it. We have building on it, there's a building on it right now. I don't, I don't have the concerns about needing it in the future. So I guess I understand giving it away doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of precedent, but I don't have any problem with selling it.
Okay. Uh, I think that's John.
Yeah, you know, I hear what Eric's actually saying that we're already extending kind of a protection here with a revocable, you know, encroachment agreement. Considering what Cynthia has said about the fact that town is missurveyed all over the place, people's lot lines are encroaching all over the place, town right of way is encroached upon all over the place, and we don't really have strong takings. I, I would feel that potentially that while the lawyer or, uh, Ms. Keeney's attorney is doing his due diligence to try to protect her, he may not necessarily have the background of the town of Netherlands to know that dang near every lot is encroaching on every other lot. And every time we get surveyed, we discover how bad the surveys were before. So I would be happy to see this pass with irrevocable, just so that we are preserving our town right of way. I am, would only be in favor of the irrevocable encroachment agreement if it specifically, you know, says in that contract, as we have stated, that if the building burns down, uh, collapses, has significant structural damage, that at that point it is revoked and we go back to the drawing board. Personally, I would like to see us just vote to pass this right now with a revocable agreement and then leave it on the business owner's choice of, do you want to continue to move forward without the absolute one hundred percent protection? Or do you move forward in good faith, seeing that there are ten other, you know, maybe at least three, four other properties in town that have a similar agreement? And those businesses have not been greatly affected by it. And when properties change hands, these things are kind of known in town and someone will still most likely buy it. That's my two cents is we just passed this with the, the revocable and we say we understand the desire for the irrevocable, but it does seem like it's kind of a bad precedence.
Jonathan? Other trustees have comments, thoughts, or if anyone would like to move us forward by making a motion?
To pass this as written with a revocable agreement.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Any comments from the board before we go to the vote?
I would like, this is trustee Taylor. I would like to make absolutely sure that the two words, revocable and irrevocable are clear here. We are moving to pass this, but with a revocable encroachment agreement. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very fine.
Miranda, please call the vote.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhover.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yeah.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Unanimous passage. Um, thank you guys all. Thank you for, uh, thank you, Kelly. See you on here still, uh, for coming. I hope, uh, I'm sure you'll be talking to your attorney next and determining next steps. And I hope, uh, well, I hope for starters, we get to meet you soon in person instead of just via Zoom voice, but, um, uh, and I'm sure town staff will be continuing to work with you in the coming weeks.
Thank you guys.
Twenty-two minutes and we still have one action item tonight. I would like, before we tackle that one action item, I would like to note that we had two or actually three discussion items later tonight, several which are first reading or first being brought to the board for the first time tonight. They were brought as discussion items because of upcoming deadlines for grant proposals. This is the GOCO grant and the Boulder County Sustainability Grants, um, you know, likely we're not going to have a lot of time to discuss it. Hopefully we might be able to broach one of them briefly here before the end of this meeting. But either way, those because of deadlines in grant proposals, those will be returning to this board as action items. Uh, first action items on the next grant, GOCO, sorry, Pro-SAB has been doing a wonderful job of outreach to the community on the GOCO grant. And Jesse and the rest of Pro-SAB for what they've been doing on that. Uh, so I have, uh, good faith in that one's been not something new to the community. And of course Garrett and the SAB with, uh, the sustainability grant have been doing a ton of work uh, with outreach and also just with continued updates to this board. So they aren't new to us. But I just want to make everyone aware of that before we go on to our next action item, which is the tip funds. Is Chris Pelletier opening or Miranda?
It's Hope actually.
I'm here. Actually, I'm sorry. I'm like working the budget while I'm listening to such an exciting meeting. I'm so glad I listened tonight. So thank you. It's, you all had great questions. Um, and, and honestly, I'm introducing this because, um, the director of the Netherlands downtown. Pardon me? Pardon me? Hello?
Go ahead, Hope. I think I was just off the mic.
Okay, sure. Um, anyway, Chris Pelletier really has done all the work and all the grant writing and really uh, coming to the board several times to present this. I think it's a fantastic project. I think everyone really does on the board as well. But anyway, Chris came, uh, approached the NDDA back in August of twenty eighteen about a grant, a transportation improvement program grant that is managed by the Denver Regional Council of Governments. And, uh, in February of February thirteenth of twenty nineteen, he approached the DDA board and requested some matching funds at sixty-nine thousand dollars. And the DDA unanimously, unanimously agreed that was a, a great idea and a great project. Um, Chris returned, uh, on May fifteenth and spoke a little bit about the fact that because uh, some of the project was about Jefferson Street, pre-existing roads, that they were, that the grant was actually looking for kind of new infrastructure. So he approached the DDA board with a, a new budget and some new ideas. And the board agreed to pay or, or offer another seventy thousand dollars towards this project. I do recall it was one of my first meetings and the board was very excited about it and they really felt it was a great investment and a great return on the funds. So hopefully the aim really explains all of that. Uh, those two sections were basically from Chris's aims that he presented to the NDDA beneath the aim and the, or the bylaws and the master plan and and why this is something that the DDA thoroughly supports. This is one of those infrastructure programs we agree with. So what's presented before you tonight is resolution for twenty twenty thirty-two. Chris came to our last meeting and he said he'd like to get the funds secured through a resolution. He also presented a, a manual or I, I forget what the exact name is, but he had gone to every advisory board and asked for their input in that area. And it was so comprehensive as far as I was concerned that the DDA board really had nothing else to add to it. So hearing from Pro-SAB and SAB about ideas that they had for that is really great. So I really hope that you accept this request for a loan for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars so that we can move forward and Chris can move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Do any board members have questions for Hope? I'll kick off one here is just, um, uh, the hundred nine thousand dollar loan. And maybe I was just zoning out here because it's almost eleven o'clock. What's the repayment schedule on that loan?
I, I mean, from what we were told in the past from, uh, our former accountants is that we usually say that we could, uh, pay it in a monthly loan installments, but we've really kind of got it budgeted to pay it fairly quickly. I just had questions about, do we pay it and then receive invoices? Or, or how do those mechanics work with accounting? Um, but that's really not necessary to discuss. I think everybody. Um, that's good. Yeah. So I would determine that we would pay it once, once the program, once the loan is taken out, that the DDA would pay that back fairly quickly.
Right. So I was getting, this is another one of those which we seem to do kind of at the end of the year occasionally where we loan the DDA money, they turn around, pay it right back to us almost immediately with some very small token interest fee.
That, that's pretty much how this is structured, structured, Mayor Larson. Um, the DDA does already have this money, um, in their tip account. Uh, but as Hope alluded, it's not like, um, all of it would go to them basically as we incurred expenses. Uh, that's how the money then would be paid out, if that makes sense.
That does. Thank you. Uh, do any other trustees have questions for town staff? If not, I will open this up to public. I will open this up to public comment if anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter. Okay, not hearing anything. I will bring it back to the board uh, for, uh, further discussion or a motion regarding resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-two.
Uh, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty thirty-two more dash thirty-two.
Trustee Taylor, seconding the emotion.
Motion and second on the table. Miranda?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor. Mayor Proton Baumhover.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
Mayor, trustee Coombs Ismail.
No.
Resolution twenty dash thirty-two passes. We, well, look at that. We got to our discussion items tonight after all, uh. I would like to, you know, we have, um, three items on here plus then the rest of the informational. So I know our chair Pro-SAB, Jesse Ansari, has been very patiently sitting here for almost four hours online. So I would very much like to just hand this over to her. If you, Jesse, if you give us kind of the five-minute overview of this, uh, we're going to have you back at the very beginning of our next meeting as an action item. But if you can give us a, an overview, that would be wonderful.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I am, I don't intend to waste any time here, but, um, this is a highly time sensitive agenda item. So I do appreciate getting a couple of minutes here to just brief you on it. Um, I would like you to, um, check out the town website. Um, check out the dedicated webpage for the GOCO grant on there where community can access more information about that. Um, so just as stated in the aim, the Pro-SAB plans on applying for funding through GOCO's resilient communities program. Um, the strategic plan is different this year from all the previous cycles. So it's offering grants for needs that have emerged in direct response to the pandemic. So within the context of their five program values, which are resource conservation, outdoor stewardship, community vitality, equitable access and youth connections. So once you read the narrative, you'll see within there, um, a dialogue that just continually returns to those values. Um, and what we've included in this grant proposal is to improve the shoreline area, provide more options for park visitors to spread out, restore the natural area along Barker Reservoir shoreline. Um, and funding is being sought to refit the restrooms at Jupiter Park in order to meet the COVID requirements um, and reopen. So we've been, um, the Pro-SAB have been collaborating with Teens Inc. um, to involve and hire youth from the Teams Work Youth Crew, um, at every step throughout the process going forward. And then the grant focuses very much on the twenty thirteen Netherlands Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan. Um, I think it would probably, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing you've probably all looked through some of the narrative and some of those pieces on there. And if you haven't, I encourage you to do that for next time, but I could have a moment just to But I could have a moment just to speak a little bit about public vetting. I think that's pretty important for this, this grant. September 1st, we hosted an online presentation and input session right before the BOT meeting. September 5th, we had a walkthrough of Barca Meadows Park site area. September 7th, we had an open forum. September 9th, we presented to the DDA. We have trifold leaflets now being distributed showing the site map and grant information. And we have a letter, an article feature going into this week's Mountain Ear. We've had outreach with at least three festival organizers. So we're getting their feedback. We're working closely with them. And we have some fantastic letters of support from Alps Coaching, Tadasana Yoga, Netherlands Community Library, Wild Bear Nature Center, a parent of New Explorers Playgroup Student. And we're currently in contact and in discussions also with NCTCC, which is the Netherlands Community That Cares Coalition. We're in contact with the Netherlands Seniors, with the Netherlands Health and Human Services Department and with the City of Boulder. And hopefully, next week, we will be dropping in with Melody in on the Sustainability Advisory Board meeting to get their feedback. So we've, we've probably had about 100 people or so giving their feedback and it's been a massively positive response so far to everyone that has reviewed the plans. So we're feeling pretty positive about that. We are in close communications this round with the GOCO Project Program Coordinator. So to that end, we're, we're planning on preparing a couple of different budgets for draft review with that team, which is recommended. So we'll have the one you see here. And then this Thursday, if anyone would like to attend the Pro-SAB meeting, we're going to be kind of discussing the two different kind of priorities of budgets. So we'll have one that you'll see here, which includes everything that we really want. And then the next will be kind of components prioritized with a bit more modest budget. So we can, if the GOCO Program Communities decides to fund our amount, that's great. If they decide, they may decide to fund only certain components of the grant. So we would like to make sure we have those components, like the most prioritized. So yeah, this has been done with our grant committee and the Pro-SAB. We are looking forward to bringing this back to you for a more thorough discussion. And hopefully, yeah, you'll get time to review it in more detail. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Anyone have questions for her?
Trustee Taylor, I thought your presentation was very thorough and I'm feeling very comfortable with it.
Great, I hope so. We, we do feel in the public vetting this around. But yeah, it's not guaranteed that we would get the grant if we apply for it. So we really do want to focus the rest of this time on nearly finalizing a strong narrative and a really accurate budget. So we, we are on a very tight schedule here and we're going to try and focus all of our time into, to creating this very strong grant application.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Jesse, and we'll see you in a week.
Thank you.
See you again. Few more minutes so we can have a quick discussion also about the Sustainability Advisory Board Partnership Coalition. Are these being introduced by same person?
Well, so Mayor Larson, Garrett actually dropped off, so I'm almost ready to skip that. But Melody's still around and so I'm thinking maybe we could talk just quickly about the Boulder County Sustainability Grant instead, since she's more familiar. I'm assuming Melody would have that than the coalition. Does that sound good, Melody? I'm helping you, she's out. Why not?
Yeah, let's do it.
I just thought maybe you could go over the matching grant, the grant, Melody, and we'll save the coalition for next time.
We are bringing this before you guys, ahead of time, making sure that we have time to prepare for the grant and that the board is on board with us moving forward with continuing the sustainability coordinator position. So the grant, I believe, is due early November. We'd like to get it in in October, if possible. The county funding has changed, maybe slightly as far as the amount. If we can go for the full 15,000, we'd like to, but we are, you know, have been told by the county, it's possible that's going to be a little less because of COVID tax revenue related things. Garrett has done a fantastic job at helping us really dial in how to put into practice a lot of the projects we've had on the, on the burners for so long. So we really support moving a sustainability coordinator position into the future. When we originally brought this before the board, a year ago, before we hired Garrett, we discussed how moving forward, we wanted this to be a part of town staff always and expand this position into the future. We understand that with COVID and everything, expanding the position this year might not be a possibility. But initially, we had discussed including some town budgetary funding in this position for 2021. So that's why we're bringing it before you now and you're having budget discussions and all that kind of stuff, to really just put it in your minds of how do we want to move forward with this sustainability coordinator? I'd really like to say that it's important to us as a sustainability board. And we definitely would advise you to continue having this position. So let's see what else. We are looking for the normal match of 3750. That's if we get the full 15,000 grant. So basically, this year, what we're requesting is a continuation of the position that we've had over the last year. And if Garrett is willing to continue to be that employee, we'd love to just renew the contract and move forward that way. And we're looking at other, other kind of funding resources to be able to expand that position if possible without putting on anything extra on town budget. And we've also been kind of talking with the county and other towns about how to expand to an intermountain coordinator. But that's more of a longer-term discussion that might not come to fruition this year. But we're definitely working on it.
Great.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Melody. Anyone have any real quick questions for Melody on that? All right. Well, we look forward to talking about this as well on October 6th. Do you want to do a one-minute Envision 2030 update?
Sure, I can be quick. So we are officially, I've actually received four more since I made this update. So we're officially at 45 town responses. Continuing to obviously push the different outreach efforts. Big shout out to trustee Coombs Ismail, who hung out with Karen and I all day on Sunday for the farmer's market. So that was our last outreach and we were able to connect with quite a few people. And then Sunday, the 27th, a thank you in advance to Mayor Larson and trustee Taylor, who will help at that event. So we're still just trying to get the word out and it does seem to be working. You know, every day I'm getting a few more. And so this kind of, please keep spreading the word about Envision 2030, so we can get more responses.
Great. Thank you. All right, throw this out to the board. If anyone has a quick 20-second things, anyone have anything they want to bring up in our last minute and a half? Or just a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This is trustee Taylor, I second the motion.
Very good. We have a motion second on the table. Miranda?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you guys all very much. Have a wonderful evening. This was a long one, but a good one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.